Good morning and welcome to the May 27, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Can we hear your report?
Notice for the May 27, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 19, 2011 on the bulletin board outside City Hall before you as Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding budget study session including capital improvement program, internal service departments, GWP, police, and fire.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck.
Madam Mayor, could I add one thing first? After I left yesterday, I was in my office in the closing of the meeting. I had all the handouts. I watched the television cast. I thought all the reports were good. I have no comments on them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for again giving of your time to come to a study session to continue to work on the budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2011-12. This is budget study session number seven. If anybody happens to be counting, we'll be taking up first the city clerk, then we'll move to the city attorney. We'd like to have some further discussions with you about the library given council member comments over the last several days, and then we hope to close the morning with a review of the information services budget. With that, I'll go to Mr. Kosakian.
Madam Mayor and council, we apologize for the date of May 25 on our presentation. Obviously, we didn't -- we should have realized that this would be a long discussion. We just wanted to, I guess, make this feel a little bit like Groundhog's Day for you going back in time, but our department is one of the smaller departments, course one that's having technical difficulties. All right, there we go. All right.
They say before they don't want to cut their budget. We are one of the smaller departments. We're a lean department.
That a lot.
No, in all seriousness, we want to thank you, Mayor Friedman and council, and for taking on this important task of studying the budget and look forward to working with you and our colleagues in the various city departments as we face the challenges ahead. Our department is one of the smaller departments in the city alongside the city attorney's department and city treasurer's department, and we have always been a lean operation, but during difficult economic times, we have kept in step and made cuts where we were able to. Unfortunately, that has not been easy, particularly given our mission, which we will go over, and the nature of the work that we do, which is ensuring compliance with state and local regulations and laws. But we have managed year after year to make some staffing restructuring to allow savings while still striving to provide services without sacrificing the quality and efficiency of those services. And as you can imagine, as every department knows, that is a continuous challenge. So I will give you a brief overview of our core mission and our staffing organization chart, and then provide an overview of the various department accounts and break down as finance has helped us determine these. Thank you. So the mission statement is basic. It's to maintain records and provide accurate information, to provide superior professional and friendly service to the public and to our internal customers, to conduct elections in a nonpartisan and impartial manner, and to issue licenses and permits to ensure fair code compliance. In the organization chart, you see that the city clerk's position is a elected position. Working in my office is the secretary to the city clerk, assistant city clerk, and we are divided into two operations, the office operations and licensed services. In the office operations, we have a senior office services specialist, senior office services specialist and senior office service specialist one and office service specialist two. We have three of those. And in licensed services, we have licensed investigators. We have two of those.
What kind of investigations does a licensed investigator do?
The licenses that our office issues, we have a number of peddler permits. We have, pardon me, we have live entertainment, amplified sound, code compliance in regards to restaurant establishments, a lot of the banquet facilities. Those are the types of --
Filming, anything?
Filming, we do. We do issue those permits, but there really is no license inspection related to that. At times, we will be called out to make sure that they haven't exceeded the boundaries of what they're allowed to do in their permit. Usually has to do with traffic and transportation, but fire and police are on hand to ensure that. Posting, proper posting of notices, oftentimes our staff will go to inspect those. Kennel permits, those are types of issues that will arise.
Are you sure staff involved with taxi cabs at all?
We do also do taxi cabs, and we do non-emergency medical vehicles. A variety of those. Those are usually done on premises here at City Hall, but field inspections are the ones I stated, and there's a full listing of those available on our website. So these are the general fund accounts, administration, licenses and permits, public records, public meetings, support, and elections. Next slide, please. Here you can see that we have had a 9.9 percent decrease in our proposed general fund budget from the previous year, and this is in part due to the new method of calculating cost allocation, but also to staffing adjustments and austerity measures we have adopted as best we can. Our full-time staff is 10 people with two in management. The next slide, please. Our full-time staff is 10 people with two management, myself and my very capable assistant city clerk, and eight non-management staff tasked with the different areas and duties that we will review. Next slide. To core services, city clerk's office is a service department within the city upon which city council, city departments, and general public rely for information regarding the operation and legislative history of the city. The department serves as a liaison between the public and city council and provides related municipal services. Administration is responsible for the personnel and fiscal management, as well as the daily operations of the office, ensuring professional customer service to the public and internal customers alike. On this slide, we see that there's been reductions due to the position restructuring and association negotiation pay adjustments. There have been increases, and we can see that we are not immune to the increases in benefits and other obligations. This makes up most of the impact as we see in our budget in terms of areas where there may be slight increases, but we have sought to offset that with a decrease in overall salaries. Next slide. Licenses and permits, and those issued by city clerk's office include, but are not limited to council member Manukian and council amusement and arcade devices, animal license permits, catering truck permits, live entertainment, general peddler permits. We also have motorized peddler permits, non-emergency medical transportation permits, bath and massage permits, which we may no longer be involved in due to a state law that was passed that may supersede anything that we do, solicitation permits, and other miscellaneous permits. We also do, which wasn't listed there, tobacco retail, which was adopted by the council not long ago to ensure that people distributing, selling tobacco in the city of Glendale have the proper permits to do so. So this is the budget for licenses and permits. Go to the next slide, please. And again, you will notice in all those slides, the decreases being in the salaries area. City clerk's office core services continued on public records, which is probably one of the most important tasks that we do, given the amount of interest that some of the activities of the city generates, that the public wants to know about. The city clerk's office attests, notarizes, processes, files, research, retrieves, maintains, monitors, receives signs, opens, closes, seals, and delivers upon request most documents that flow in and out of City Hall. Additionally, the office is responsible for dispensing information in accordance with the Public Records Act, as well as answering questions to Glendale Municipal Code. If we can move forward, please. And this is the public records budget that you will see. The $1,700 or less that you see in the MNO is due to an adjustment in the telephone Public meeting support, responsible for council redevelopment agency, housing authority, agendas, and minutes preparation and follow-up. Additionally, responsible for maintaining paperwork of commission applicants and verifying voter status, logging council appointments to various commissions, maintaining attendance records and ensuring complete compliance with disclosure requirements. This includes statements of economic interest, Form 700s, as well as the 460s. It's important to note that for a city of our size, our operation, we process about 500 Form 700s, statements of economic interest. That's from commissioners, city staff, and we're looking at ways to streamline that process. Right now, it's a very paper-intensive. Staff requires a lot of staff hours to implement that. There are methods to change that, and we're going to study those and look into them with the help of Information Services Department. And this has just come up in the last month, so I don't have any further details. I do know that there are some cities, like Long Beach, the city of Los Angeles Ethics Commission has adopted these. So any areas where we can streamline process, we are looking to do so. The budget for this service is the following. Again, you'll note the decrease in salaries. Of course, elections, coordinating and conducting municipal elections in nonpartisan manner while obeying all local, state, and federal laws. If we can go on to the next slide. Here you will see a significant decrease in the MNO budget of the elections. This doesn't mean that we're going to cut or slash the budget. You may have had this explained to you already, but for point of clarification, we have just taken the budget for the elections and distributed it over an annual period. So whereas there would be a spike in our budget the years we had elections, and then there'd be a dip in the years we did not, this has been distributed evenly. We take half the amount is allocated to our staff, to our office in the off-year and the remainder in the year when we have the election.
Question, the $373,000, that was for one election for the prior year? Is that what it was for, or?
That is, that was based on the previous election's actual.
So from now on, every year, you're going to be budgeting approximately $180,000 so that it accumulates in the fund?
Precisely. Precisely, council member Manukian, and we have, we recoup a portion of this cost from the school district and the college with whom we consolidate, so the actual figure in terms of the financial obligation of the city is less, but we also are looking at --
How much do we recoup from that?
We recoup, well, it depends on how many candidates, how volamus the mailers are that go out from our city, but approximately.
On average.
On average, in the last election, $122,000 for the school district, approximately $80,000 from the college board. So about two-thirds of that will be recouped. Additionally, we, in the last election where we purchased a new machine in order to do signature verification, that was a service that we had contracted out to the Los Angeles County Registrar Recorder previously. Technology is an amazing thing, and we're able to access their records remotely through the help of the new device. We were able to do a lot of the scanning and a lot of the verification in-house. In past, the county would charge us about $10,000 per election. That cost will be about half the amount because they still charge us for accessing the records, just not their staff time of actually looking into it. And we're also looking to share the cost of the device, the machine that we purchased, with the city of Santa Clarita, who has their elections in --
Will they be paying us for the use?
They will be paying us for the use. They will not be renting it. We will --
Provide the service.
No, we will actually pay for half of the machine. The other half, they'll be paid for. They use it in even-yeared elections. We will use it in odd-yeared elections. They have their elections in April of even years, so it works out very nicely. We were originally looking at Pasadena, but Pasadena could not accommodate it. Our elections are too close to one another, and they actually have two elections potentially if they happen to have runoffs, which they did in this last election. Moving on to the general fund reductions, in previous years, in fiscal year '07-'08, we eliminated a customer service representative position. That was our front desk receptionist. It was, as you can imagine, a very difficult thing to do considering how much foot traffic our office generates, how many people come into our office. We often refer to ourselves as a 4-1-1 of City Hall. People will call us asking as to which department to gain contact with. We also reallocated a senior OSS position to an OSS II, which was a reduction in salary, and reallocated an office service supervisor position to senior office specialist in '09- '10, which has also provided us with considerable savings. And this was all in part of restructuring the office, streamlining, and looking at duties that can be done by one individual, which were done previously by two. So general fund essential programs. Essentially, it's administration licenses and permits, public records, public meetings, support, and elections, and there are really nothing other than the essential programs outlined in our offices. If we can go to the next slide. In terms of priority or discretionary, there isn't much. As stated, we ensure proper compliance with codes, laws, state law, Brown Act, and there are areas where we can look at streamlining in terms of technology improvements, agenda management processes, and we are working and will continue to work very closely with the Information Services Department, as well as administrative services and management, to ensure that we are able to look at areas where we can make improvements. Also, I want to, one more point that deserves to be noted is that in the recent report from Willdan, the report stated that, quote, "Revenues generated by the city clerk service are exceeding costs," which is very significant. And this is in part because of the cost allocation plan, but additionally, our fees have not been adjusted for almost three decades, some even longer. So they're, all our fees should be reviewed, and there should be adjustments made to them in order to recoup the cost. We can walk through, I think, the remainder of these slides. I think we're almost done, and then I'd be happy to try and answer whatever questions you may have. Any questions for which I or my staff may not readily have the answers, we'd be happy to research it and provide you with the answer at the future budget study sessions or to you directly. I think if we can go on to the next slide. Thank you.
Mr. Manukian?
In terms of revenues, if you're covering your expenses, in addition, you're generating revenues, why would you want to adjust fees?
Well, part of it is because of, go ahead.
Well, you might not have the ability to adjust fees. I mean, if you're recouping your costs and it's not supported by, and the Willdan study said you're covering your costs, then actually you wouldn't have a basis to adjust your fees. So likelihood is, we wouldn't recommend any adjustments. Now, we could look at it fee by fee. There may be some that are losing, there may be some that are gaining more, so you may make that adjustment internally on the individual fees, but on the whole, looking at his department, he's recouping all the costs.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Question. Vanguard supporters or contributors make significant public records requests, and in response, some of the data that has to be gathered, I understand, is inches thick, maybe foot thick or whatever, and people requesting it says it's available in the city clerk's office. You've run out stack like this. They come in, they stand at the counter sometimes, look at sheets and says, "Thank you very much." They don't pay a penny because they didn't take a sheet. So are you looking at a means to get out of having to, having the city spend the cost of producing this only for them not to buy it?
We actually prefer the method of them coming in, whoever the individual is, regardless of affiliation, and looking at the records in our offices because it allows us to control and observe and make sure that the records are not tampered with. We have considered in the past, as was mentioned a few days ago, when individuals will hand us documents at a city meeting wishing for it to be distributed, whether it's one copy and they want to everyone, and we always copy city manager staff on it. We would tend to make in the past copies of it and individually distribute. Not everyone reads those. What we have started doing is we'll scan one copy and send you electronic copies to everyone. We considered that method of scanning documents, making them available electronically, but there's a very gray area, and you have to proceed with caution given official documents from the city and distributing them. So what we allow them to do is come in, observe, look at them, and then if they wish to have copies made, they'll have an official copy made in the city clerk's office.
Stack when they don't want it, what do you do with it? $10 a sheet?
Well, sometimes they have to look at original documents, if it's a Form 700 or a 460.
But I mean, if you have to accumulate.
We do, we do recoup costs. When we do have to have copies made, we do charge for the copies.
Even if they don't take it, if they just come and look at the counter?
Yeah. Now, the staff time required to make those copies or required to look for those documents, we do not recoup, and that is a big issue amongst city clerks throughout the state. In fact, I was at a conference in Nashville last week, an international conference for clerks, and it's one of the growing issues, the public records requests and how we're able to recoup costs of, you know, we have city attorney staff member who is assigned to us, and not exclusively, but I can say a good portion of her time is often spent analyzing compliance, whether we have to provide the record, what form we have to provide it in, et cetera. Those costs, council member Weaver, we do not take into consideration. Some cities have looked into it. I can see if any city has been successful in crafting any type of legislation to recoup those costs, but I see our distinguished city attorney lighting up his mic, so I'll defer to him.
If I can just finish. I understand the public's right to know. That is an argument. It's just the cost involved, the people involved, and then nothing's taken out of City Hall. It's just looked at after a lot of labor and paper waste. But I understand the right to know it, but I guess you're doing what I was thinking you might be doing, looking at other cities, and is there a way to cut costs? I don't know how you can do it.
Okay. Madam Mayor, let me provide maybe an assist. The state legislature, in its wisdom, determined that the public's right to know can't be circumscribed by excessive costs. It would be very easy, for example, for us to charge extremely excessive costs, which would then essentially have a member of the public shy away from making a Public Records Act request. Likewise, the Public Records Act has been interpreted by a case called North County Parents Association to allow only the recovery of the exact cost of duplication of the record. That means the prorated cost of the copy machine, the cost of the paper, and the cost prorated of the person that's making the copies. Essentially, as the city clerk has noted, approximately $10 a page. It would take a legislative fix at the state level, and I frankly think there would be a considerable opposition to it, to allow for the recruitment of additional costs other than the exact cost of duplication. There is an exception for having to develop computer programs, and when appropriate, we will assess what those costs are and inform the requister that the costs to actually program, develop a program to extract data in the form that they want is going to cost more than the exact cost of duplication. But other than that exception, essentially both the state legislature and the courts have indicated it's only the exact cost of duplication.
I understand that, but when it's duplicated and then not purchased, that's what I hear happens down there quite often. It's sitting there, and I look on the shelf. All the stuff is sitting there that has been asked for, and it's never purchased, so it costs the city money.
It does. The only way you can, essentially, the only, well, one of the only ways you can address it is, as the city clerk once again pointed out, is we can have originals that are just pulled, collated together, and have the individual come in under a controlled environment and review the originals, and then the individual can choose and pick which copies they want, and then we can charge for those copies. Sometimes, from a practice perspective, it may be a little difficult when the public records request requires records from multiple divisions to be pulled, and then, for example, if they want finance records and records from another department, they may have to pull together, and rather than pulling all the originals together into the city clerk's office for review, they'll copy them and send them over. The city clerk, again, noted, we will try to scan a lot of those records into electronic format for either providing to a requister or to provide to members of the council or otherwise. There may be other ways of dealing with it. For example, if we go to an automated record system.
Yes.
We look at more of an automated record system, which I think the city clerk has been looking at over some period of time. That also may be a way of cutting costs and possibly staff time. But the way it is right now, it is a conundrum, but the state feels the scales tip in favor of the public's ability to obtain those records.
You know, as, just to add to what our city attorney said, technology is a wonderful thing, except perhaps maybe when you're a city clerk trying to use them outside a podium, and it doesn't work out for you. But with, and I'm sure my colleagues will not let me live that down, but we, as we move towards a more automated agenda management system, electronic records, and I'm sure Mr. Fraga, our director of Information Services Department, will go into that because we want to work very closely with them. It makes it a lot easier to find documents. You know, you do a word search, you do a phrase search. That allows us to find things a lot quicker than going through files. Having said that, we are a city of 100-plus years. We have a lot of documents. Even as they were scanned, the scanning technology wasn't as robust as it is today and cannot look for words specifically in certain documents that are aged, et cetera. So we do have to look at our overall records management, and that would be one way of addressing it. However, in terms of the amount of public records requests, we try to control it as best we can in terms of the flow, but if there is more, there's really little, given the law, that we can do about it to stave that off. It is the public's right to know what we do.
I know you're doing that, and this is one of the benefits of the technology age, that we are being able to retrieve data, historical data, a lot quicker now. Understand that, but since we're looking at $18 million cut, I've heard my colleagues talking about a little bit here and there, so this is one that just popped up in my head, I thought I ought to ask. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Kosakian, one of the things you mentioned regarding the production of the documents is that you indicated that by being in the room, you could make sure that documents aren't tampered with by the person. Have you ever experienced anyone tampering with documents?
No, we have not.
Do you have any suspicions that anyone has tampered documents when they come in to look for them?
No, we have not, and fortunately, due to one of the recommendations of an election audit two years previous to this one, we installed cameras to observe the counter area where most of the observations take place, and, you know, our office, and it's properly posted and people can see as they walk in, it states that it is, the front counter is under camera surveillance. So we do have that additional measure to observe, but other city clerks have mentioned, I mean, there's horror stories amongst the city clerk profession of people spilling coffee, tearing out an original document as a souvenir, particularly in some of the older municipalities back east where cities were started back in the 18th century. Someone may want a copy of the autograph of John Hancock or someone, but nothing here.
If someone were to intentionally tamper or remove a document, that would be a felony, Mr. Howard?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, it's a felony to remove or tamper with or destroy a public record.
Do the people coming in to inspect those documents know the seriousness of any impropriety during their?
I would hope so, but it would never hurt to remind people. We can surely post something to inform them of.
Now, Mr. Howard, the right to petition the court for your grievances is a constitutional right, yet the courts have also placed restrictions on those who appear too often and for frivolous matters before the court.
Vexatious litigation rule.
Or litigious plaintiff. Are there any analogous procedures with those who request documents continually? And if they wanted, if someone wanted to, or a group of people wanted to, they could essentially either shut down the city clerk's office or bring a grievance against the city for not having documents produced in the timeframe which they request. So is there any safeguard that we have as the, those who hold the public trust to make sure that we administer our city efficiently without being overly burdened with, you know, trivial requests for documents on a continual basis?
Madam Mayor. Yes. Madam Mayor, members of council, it is limited, but the answer, the short answer is yes. There's a Supreme Court decision that notes that the thread, if you will, or string of reasonableness has to go, has to kind of string through the entire public records request universe. The case actually involved a city clerk's office, the city clerk's off, not here in Glendale, but the city clerk's office was preparing for an election, and an individual came in and was requesting numerous public records. It was voluminous. It was voluminous, and the city clerk's office said, "Look, we're trying, we'll get to them as soon as we can. We're preparing for an election." It was very difficult, and they were sued for noncompliance with the time limits, 10-day time limit plus 14 for Public Records Act. And this ultimately got to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court says, "Look, you have to look at this in the context of reasonableness. You ask for voluminous requests. It doesn't mean that the city has to stop functioning as a government. That's their primary core mission. And as a result, we're going to look in particular cases," and they really have to be very specific, "where you're going to have that tension between the desire to have somebody have public records and your need to be able to continue your operations." We have, in the past, sent letters to what I will call prolific public records requesters, noting that we have such a volume of public records requests, both in number and in subcategory. Some of the times, we receive a request that has 15 subcategories, and that it's going to take us longer to comply with the requests, and therefore, our intention is to comply, but we may miss the time limits. And we are going to try our best, as we do, to make sure that we meet the time limits. But given the volume of not only the number of requests, but the type of number of documents that you want, we are going to have to prioritize them in the order received, and we'll get to them in a manner, again, as quickly as possible. But other than that, there's been no court decision, and there's no statutory provision involving, quote-unquote, "vexacious" requesters or anything of that nature.
In fact, on your staff, and maybe you'll present this, you have a deputy city attorney whose time is largely consumed in administering to and collecting and accumulating much of the CPRA requests that have come into the office.
It's about 0.5 FTE, yes, about one-half time. That's not in our presentation, and actually, part of the presentation, when we get to it, will be to tell you where you can find that specified data, because we have it for our annual report. It's online.
Yeah, and that role is essential, Councilmember Najarian, and we work in very close cooperation with the city attorney, because the last thing we would want to do is provide information that, you know, we should redact personal information. We want to be as open and inclusive and available to the public that would like to know how their government is run, yet we need to take precautions.
So a half FTE on an attorney?
Yes.
And we're talking about cutting, we can't cut that position. We can't say, "Sorry, we've left it on the chopping block." But at the same time, maybe in a few moments, we'll hear how libraries, serving an important function to our community, are going to be shuttered due to a much lesser amount than the half FTE that goes towards chasing these Public Records Act requests through your office, not including Mr. Kosakian's office as well.
You won't, certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council, you won't find an argument from me that, you know, the conundrum you find yourself in is that in responding to multiple requests, and I believe the news press some time ago did an article noting that the requests for records in the city of Glendale exceeded the requests for Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and the Los, City of Los Angeles combined.
And that's from, I might add, not from many sources, that's from two people.
Yeah, I think it was more than two, but it was, because it was primarily from two, but there were...
Say that again? I'm sorry?
I believe the number of requests, and again, this was analyzed over, I believe it was one or two years, and this was a number of years ago, the news press did a, what I'll call an investigative article, where they determined that the number of public records requests, because we track them all, and we catalog them all, the number of public records requests received by the city of Glendale in a year exceeded the number that the Los Angeles Department of Water Power and the City of Los Angeles combined received in one year.
I find that just astounding.
And we did as well.
Incredible diversion of our precious resources at this difficult financial time. I'm just stunned. I can't believe that figure. That's amazing.
We can look in the news press again, but it was, and again, I may have the exact, it was, I know LADWP was included, it may have been another city, I thought it was LA City as well, but it was, again, whatever it was, it was significantly larger organizations were receiving less public records requests than the city of Glendale in one year.
You know, I realize that Mr. Milano and Mr. Allen have every right to make these requests, even though it is costing the city of Glendale. How much would you think that it's costing per year between...
Well, we analyze in only our office, the costs approximately, just for the one-half FTE, fully loaded with benefits, is well into the $125,000 to $130,000 range. That does not include the staff time from Mr. Kosakian or any other department at all, nor does include the exact cost of duplication.
So let's be generous and say that these two individuals are costing, in public record requests, $200,000 a year that could be going elsewhere. That's, you know, that's their right. What bothers me is this news that they're circumventing paying for some of this duplication by figuring out this loophole that if they don't take the documents out of the city clerk's office, they don't have to pay for it. And I don't understand why we can't charge them. If we have to do the duplication, why can't we bill them for that?
Can we be clear on that?
Yeah, let's be clear.
If an individual requests copies, I think if it's a large amount, we can have the ability to ask for a deposit for the cost of the duplication.
We can.
What I'm hearing is, we duplicate it in many cases because it's for our convenience.
That's correct.
As opposed to having to bring original documents out of departments and bring them to the city clerk's office.
And we also forewarn, if it's a voluminous request, we will, and they have requested copies, we ask, "Do you want to view the documents? Do you want copies of it?" We will let them know ahead of time what the approximate cost is.
I understand that, but if the law says that if we do duplications, we can bill for that, why can't we do that in this case?
Well, because the public has a right to review the original records without having to pay for copies unless they want copies. And again, as Mr. Starbord noted, this is exactly correct. It's for our convenience that we duplicate the records from other departments to consolidate them over in the city clerk's office for review. We could, I guess, potentially send people from department to department and to department. There is an unpublished opinion that frowns on that practice, frankly, because, again, it begins to look like you're putting a member of the public on somewhat of a hamster wheel running from, running around in multiple departments. It actually is easier for us to be able to consolidate them. My staff, for example, in reviewing, they're going to need the documents to review, whether they are originals or copies, to determine whether certain information that is not disclosive needs to be redacted. So there's a lot of convenience in that for us to be able to do it. If we had, for example, if we were able to go to a more automated system, records management system, we may be able to eliminate some of that, some of the movement of the paper that either has to be duplicated or moved over, whether it's to my office or another department.
Well, I will say that I'm not for allowing people to review original materials if they're at all sensitive, whether or not we have cameras, because that, if there is tampering, we may not find that out for years, or if ever, because it's not as though you double-check afterwards and memorize what was there before and compare it to what was there afterwards. So I would not be for that.
You know, and I...
One second. Mr. Manukian had his hand up.
Well, I think the answer to this is the automated system. I don't, I think the city should have as much information on the website as possible so that people can be directed to a certain, and I know you do that to a certain extent so that we don't incur the cost of the research and all that. If we can point them to the right links where they can go and access the documents that they need, and if those documents need to be redacted in any way, shape, or form, there's ways of doing it on PDF files. So I think the answer to all of this problem in terms of the funds and all of that should be, should be done through an automated system that has all the documents available on the website.
If I may...
So that costs?
Yeah, how much?
If we automate the whole system?
Every single document. But that's sort of what's being requested, is almost every single document.
I would defer that to Information Services to give the approximate cost. I would say that that is, that should be, rather, one of our goals. And I'll give you an example of how technology can diminish the amount of requests for services that you may have. In the past, where individuals wanted to review minutes, they would come in, ask to look at minutes, and we would provide that or make copies of it. We then, now, the minutes are available online. Hardly anyone actually comes in, walks in, and says, "I want a copy." I mean, you still, once in a while, will get the rare occasion where someone wants an actual copy of a minute, and we provide that. Then we went to action minutes, and we started recording everything. People would make record, requests for VHS tapes, and again, once in a while, we still may get one for a VHS tape, but for the most part, now, it's DVDs. And now, with it being archived online, we don't even have that. People will, if someone wants to look at a meeting, we will just direct them to the location on our website where that information is housed. So we are moving in the right direction. It will cost money. I just don't know if during these austere times, it's the area where this council would be, would want to spend it. Of course, I would advocate for it, but it'd be difficult for me, standing alongside my colleagues, all of us facing the same challenges that you're facing.
Things like financial information and, you know, the salary information, they're already, I know the CAFR is already there, but is the budget there as well?
And salaries.
Salaries are now there.
Things of that sort, and maybe on a monthly basis, we can have it up there, as I've requested the statements, and I will make it available. But as these documents are generated, I think going to an electronic version of the documents will make, providing the documents in case of a Public Records Act request, easier and more readily available to the public.
There's also records retention schedules. Certain records don't need to be kept forever. The technology today, you know, through programs like FileNet, documents that are created at City Hall, in any department in the city, have the capability, and I'm sure Ed can answer these questions much better than I can. I'm a history, I studied history in college, not technology, but they actually will create a suicide date, a date where they will self-terminate if they are to be terminated, if they're not a record that is supposed to be permanent. So it minimizes even the destruction portion of it on part of the city. So as we start moving towards more electronic documents, and that technology becomes better and becomes more specialized to address the needs of municipalities, as we're seeing with numerous services out there available, a lot of these issues can and will be addressed.
Okay, I have a card. Herbert Milano.
Well, Mr. Milano is coming up. Madam Mayor, members of council, just, here's the wonder of technology. I've got some statistics that were just sent to me. Public records requests, and I'll start in '07, '08, we had 387 specific identifiable requests, and that doesn't include subparts. Those are actual individual requests for records. 267 '08 and '09, and 383 in '09, '10, which is essentially more than one per day, and that doesn't include subparts. But those are individually distinguishable requests of public records.
Are the requests for the public records, the requests themselves and the identity of the person making such requests confidential or privileged?
No.
They are not, however, a person, a person may make an anonymous request.
Right. The anonymity is fine, but the vast majority of the individuals, because we need to know who to contact when we get near to the 10-day time period, they generally put their name and some way of contacting them.
I think the extent of these type of requests are really specious and indefensible, and I hope the council takes a unified stand on frowning on such extensive and burdensome requests, recognizing there are valid requests to be made, but the amount of requests here just seem to be over the top and made with the intent to either delay or to set the city up for a lawsuit and violating the CPRA.
I have to tell you, though, and I give tremendous credit to the city clerk's office and all other departments who have to respond to these requests when they come in through my office, we're sort of the neck of the funnel, kind of inverted. We end up sending out these requests, we bring in the documents, we review them. For the most part, I think all staff do an excellent job, even though they're over, essentially, at the top of, I don't want to say overburdened, but they're certainly doing everything they can to do all the work that they just have to do to fulfill their core missions, and yet they're responding to these records requests in a timely fashion. We, for the most part, meet the time limits required by the Public Records Act. As already noted, a number of the requests we get, we're able to, fortunately, just point out, see budget online, when you have a number of these things that are posted online. So the more information we can get into an automated system, the easier and faster we're going to be able to comply with some of these requests.
If you've got a list of those, and Mr. Manukian hasn't really been privy to the extent and the volume of these requests, if we can give him an idea of what we're talking about here, I mean, it may sound as though we're very anti-transparentcy, but I think if he sees the extent and the volume and the nature of these requests, I'm sure he'll join us in agreeing that they've really gone over the top in these sort of things.
And here's, oh, I'm sorry, council.
Just going to say, is this the kind of thing on the monthly report? And the industry transparency put up so anybody in the city could look and see how many we're getting?
We actually...
I'd like to know how many are coming in every month.
We include that in our annual report. We did our first annual report a number of months. We can certainly do that.
It'll be online, so I can go on and...
We can certainly, I can talk to staff about getting it online.
You don't spend too much time doing it.
You're right. That's more than...
No, we don't want that.
The news article I was speaking of, by the way, was, I believe, January 19, 2008. It was written by Jason Wells, and the title was, "Activists Taking a Toll on Citigroup of Council Critics Is Running a High Tab Using the Public Records Act to Get Documents." And that was the article that described the significant cost that the city of Glendale were complying with the Public Records Act.
Okay, let me go to the public. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I write sometimes one, sometimes three essays per week on Vanguard. I am not a member of the Board of Vanguard. I write essays to Vanguard just the same way as I write essays to the Glendale News Press. Unfortunately, during the past three years or four years, they have refused to print some of my longer essays that extend over 300 words. I cannot be, I'm a frequent requister of, a user of the Public Records Act. I use about one or two requests per week. Some years, it's only one or two per month. I would challenge anyone here to look at the request that I made and listen, and then test to see whether my requests have had any kind of, whether they were valid in terms of the material that I'm requesting. As an example, for many years, I requested information on the salaries, individual salaries of the city employees. I was particularly interested, especially, on the increased salaries for police and fire. And I was denied those records until the California Supreme Court basically validated us, and another case in the city of Oakland. I have here, for example, a kind of request that I've been requesting, but I'll give you just a sampling of why this is so important. First of all, the city's budget has increased from $400 million to $800 million, and the city's unfunded obligations and funded accrued obligations are about $300 million that oftentimes don't get counted in our calculations. And the cost for these requests, and I cannot attest to whatever work Mr. Allen is doing, but just for mine, I think is infinitesimal with regard to the overall cost of the city's budget. I have made a request with regard to issues about disability, retirements, for example. Most people don't know that 50% of firefighters and police combined retire on a disability. And that is a tremendous cost and a burden to the taxpayers of California and the city of Glendale. I think it is relevant discussions, but unfortunately, the city council, you, Ms. Mayor Friedman, Mayor Najarian, don't ask those tough questions. You've received significant money from the unions, and you do not challenge those costs that are relevant for us to understand. And it is those costs that are basically causing the significant budget deficits and budget shortfalls in California and the city of Glendale. I would request that you provide for us and give to us the same amount of respect that I give to you here, you know, and to the general public who take the time to find out the things that you don't want to find out and disclose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Well, I take issue with what he's saying. I mean, this is an attempt to backpedal and backtrack and try and throw some legitimacy on the volume, the extent of Mr. Milano's requests. I think in the past, he's been anything but legitimate in his actions toward the city. We can bring up the old story about the lawsuit challenge of the downtown specific plan, frivolous, and the thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars that it cost the city. And let's think of that as we're cutting our budgets in every single department, and we're leaving streets disrepaired, the same streets that he complains about, libraries shuttered, parks shuttered, services to seniors, and it goes on and on. So nice try, Mr. Milano, but take the cloak of civic duty off, and let's see your true colors.
Mr. Manukian?
Yes. In terms of transparency, I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. I do disagree in principle with the premise of a cost of providing Public Records Act requests. I believe that we are all here on the dime of the taxpayers, and I think the taxpayers, I don't think, I believe, that the taxpayers have all the rights to all the documents that the city generates, whether it comes from one taxpayer, whether that taxpayer is a resident of the city of Glendale or is not, or whether it comes from 207,000 taxpayers. In principle, I will disagree. However, I will recognize the cost of providing that, the documents that are being requested, but that is part of the business that the city government and all governments are in. And I think, I think constitutionally, and unless the courts say otherwise, I cannot in any way limit the access of the taxpayers to the documents of the city. in any way limit the access of the taxpayers to the documents of the city. Thank you.
My only response is Chief Scoggins and his crew are obligated to respond to every 911 call that is called in. However, someone who continuously makes those calls unabatedly for minor and perhaps nonexistent issues certainly has to be frowned upon. I don't think there's a time when we can ever ignore a call that's coming in, but I still think we have to recognize the burden and the expense and the cost that most of these requests are being made on the system. And then what I would like to do is to have that list for Mr. Manukian. I think he's, he's thinking of this in the most altruistic terms in terms of the types of information that's being requested, but I, as a council member, in the last four years have been receiving lists of these frivolous, nonsensical requests that have been made that must be responded to in a timely manner involving those with the highest level of expertise in our city, whose efforts can be much better devoted towards administering the city. And that's my job as a city councilman, is to make sure we do the best job for the residents of this city and not be overly concerned with one or two people whose apparent interest in the minutia and digging up dirt on council members and other members of the city, the staff and the residents, consume an inordinate amount of time in the management of this city.
Okay, we've gotten a bit off of the budget, but that's okay. This is a study session, so we can be a little bit looser here. We all have a lot of time, right? We can just, okay. So I think that we finish with the City Clerk's Office. What are we moving to next? City Attorney.
We have the City Attorney's paperwork.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to ask Mr. Elliott if he will indulge me in working with the mouse, because like the City Clerk, I may be technologically challenged. I'm here before you this morning to present what is likely my last Department Budget Presentation. So there's somewhat of a heavy heart, but also there's a smile on my face as well. With that, similar to the City Clerk, I think we are a small internal service department, a total of 21 individuals within the department, some funded through the General Fund, others not, but through cost allocation, we're giving you the listing of 20.16 FTEs as we move into the slides. Want to point out a couple of preliminary comments. We are an internal services department. We are not a revenue generating department, per se. Occasionally, with lawsuits that we may file, we may be able to recover some costs that the cities have incurred, some costs for breach of contract and the like, but generally speaking, we are not a revenue raising department. We do not assess fees, we do not assess charges to individuals or groups for services such as you might find with the planning department or with refuse and other types of services. As a result, most of our charges come through, most of our costs are incurred through the General Fund, with the exception of the attorneys and other support staff that are, through cost allocation, charged off to other departments. With that, our department overview, it includes our mission statement, which you've seen before, which is also online as part of our annual report, and this is a hard copy of it. In sticking with the format for the budget presentation today, we've provided you with, I would say, a general level of detail, and I know that may sound a bit inconsistent. It certainly doesn't drill down into some of the issues that we were just discussing a few moments ago, like the number of public records requests or the number of litigation cases. However, that information is available to the council and the public. It's on our website, and it's available in hard copy in our annual report. So we will go into it, and certainly if you have any questions, I have the annual report in front of me. I also have some additional details I can fill in. Ms. Alexander, my legal services supervisor is here, as well as Mike Garcia, my chief assistant city attorney. So there, up for all to see is our mission statement. We have three core functions through our mission statement. We ethically prosecute code violations, both ethically and fairly. Our goal is to gain compliance. Through council policy over the years, we have begun to get a little tighter, if you will, and firmer in our approach, shortening timeframes and being a little more aggressive in gaining compliance in some of the more egregious cases, where there's either recidivism, individuals who create a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare, or those that create a lot of public concern by their conduct. We also defend the city in all of their civil litigation. Again, I think the key word in defending civil litigation is integrity. My staff handles litigation in a professional manner and integrity. I don't think you'll hear from either the courts or any attorneys that they come up against in court, that they handle themselves in anything other than with the utmost professionalism in defending the city's interests in litigation. Third, as part of our mission statement, we provide advisory assistance to the City Council, members of boards and commissions, the GRA, the Housing Authority, city departments, and all staff when required. Next, if you would, please. So in our department overview, in accordance with the charter, we prosecute, as I noted, we prosecute all violations of the charter and the municipal code. We defend the city in all of the lawsuits, and we will bring lawsuits when authorized by the City Council. We attend all City Council meetings. I have a number of staff that attend board and commission meetings to provide advice. Years ago, it was basically on an as-needed basis. As things have evolved, I've assigned specific attorneys now to actually attend all board and commission meetings of a number of board and commissions, still not all of them, but a number of them, on a regular basis. We also act as a legal advisor to the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency. Next, please. So while performing those duties as chief legal advisor, we also, among other things, we manage all outside counsel. Anytime a case is assigned with the approval of the City Council to outside counsel, whether it's defensive litigation or to handle a transactional matter, we assign an attorney in-house to manage that. That's not only to oversee the actual case or the transactional matter, but also to review the billings as they come in to ensure that we're not getting overbilled and to ensure that the billing is consistent with the hourly rate and the work that was contracted to be performed through a retainer agreement. We advise on all labor and employment issues, and that involves assisting HR, involves prosecuting matters as a representative of the appointing authority before the Civil Service Commission in some but not all cases. We also review and draft the legislation for the city, our ordinances and resolutions, provide written opinions when requested of the council to aid and advise and assist the other city departments. When time permits, we also try to review and respond to legislative action that's either pending before the state legislature or at the federal level. We will send correspondence to our state legislators and to members of the State Assembly or the State Senate to advocate for or against legislation that would negatively or positively affect the city. We will also provide written opinions to department heads and the like to assist them in their jobs. We will also, we also, as part of our job duties, draft or assist in the drafting of contracts, whether they be professional services agreements or contracts for goods and services or contracts through competitive bidding process. We don't have, I didn't note any performance measures up here, but let me describe why that is somewhat difficult in the context of practicing law. For example, a number of years ago, we established a performance measure to, a goal to turn around all contracts within 24 hours. That was our goal. It was quickly realized that that would be somewhat impossible. Because of the very fluid nature of the practice of law, we may get a request for a simple contract, and I'll just pull one out of the air, for example, advertising on city-owned bus benches. While the terms of a contract like that on its face might seem to be very simple, we set forth the obligations of the individual or group that's going to advertise on the bus benches. There'll be a maintenance obligation, there'll be a whole host of other requirements and mutual obligations, there'll be insurance indemnity and a whole host of other, what I'll call boilerplate language. But an issue crops up about the First Amendment. Is the city, is the city the speaker? In which case, we have possibly control over the content? Or is the city a regulator, in which case, we may not have any control over the content and we may have some control over the reasonable time place and manner of where it's placed and how it's placed? Those issues then begin to materialize, and what we thought was a simple contract that we can quickly turn around becomes the nature of a fairly lengthy research project. And so, performance measures such as how fast can you turn a contract around, or how soon can you handle a litigation matter, is somewhat difficult to do. Nonetheless, we do keep track of all the statistics and data, and as you will see in the upcoming annual report, based on the comments from council members and members of the public, the last time we distributed the annual report, we are actually drilling deeper into giving, trying to provide the public and the council with more specific data on the types of cases, and we hope to continue to drill down deeper each year to the point where there is no more data. We're down at the, essentially at the bottom and giving essentially base level data on everything that we do in the office. And so I think we're going to be getting there as we continue to move forward. Next slide, please. So in our department overview, we have core services. We actually have three departments or three divisions. We have our transactional division. I sort of glossed over that a moment ago. Essentially, it's our advisory division where we have a number of attorneys that provide advice either assigned to specific departments. I have two attorneys, for example, assigned to Public Works, two to Water and Power due to the volume of their work, one to redevelopment, and others, we have a couple of transactional attorneys, two FTEs that are general transactionalists that provide advice and assistance to other departments. That's their primary job. They do not do litigation. They may assist, again, in pulling documents together for the litigator, but their primary job is to advise and assist other departments in legal matters.
These are outside attorneys?
No, these are in-house, these are all in-house counsel. Again, any questions you have about outside counsel, I'll be happy to provide, but we, everything we do, these slides for the buzzer presentation is what we do in-house. The other core service of the three that we have, three divisions, is litigation, where we have our litigation team that is headed by Ann Maurer, General Counsel Litigation, where we handle the defense of the city and its employees and legal actions arising out of the course and scope of employment for the individuals and the acts or missions of the city. And not only do we defend the cases, and we're authorized by counsel, again, we may bring affirmative lawsuits, such as the council recently authorized against ADI and some of its partners and others, as well as eminent domain actions, again, where authorized by the City Council. The city attorney cannot bring legal actions on his or her own. We need the City Council's approval to do so, and that's why you occasionally see items on closed session for us to discuss the possibility that we may be initiating litigation and to get your approval. Next slide, please. And our last core service, if you will, our third division is code enforcement, and we have one full-time attorney, Yvette Nukian, who is our Deputy City Attorney, is our code enforcement attorney. Her supervisor is Carmen Moreno, and where Yvette is capable of handling all the code enforcement cases on her own where she needs an assist, Carmen Moreno can step in, and even on occasion, based on the number of attorneys that may be available. Last Friday, I went to court on four code enforcement cases. So it spread across the entire office, but Yvette is the primary resource for our code enforcement function. Next slide, please. This is our organizational chart. It is current and up to date. We actually revised it. We're continually revising our organizational chart to ensure that it accurately reflects not only form but also function of the office and what we do. So this is actually the most updated organizational chart, and it includes a listing of the one vacancy that is currently in the office, and that is a litigation position. Again, if you have any questions about them, I'd be happy to answer them. Since 2007.
Is that position necessary?
Yes. In fact, it's a litigation position. We have to, I would love to find a Court of Appeals or Supreme Court decision that said, based on budgetary concerns, we don't have to respond to lawsuits that are filed against us.
We already have a litigator.
Well, we actually, one litigator can't handle the average number of cases that we have. We average about anywhere from a low of 40 to a high of up to 60 lawsuits a year that are filed against the city, and they range in type, as noted in our annual report, from trip and falls, all the way up to police excessive force cases, employment discrimination cases and the like. Where we have insurance, right now, we have employment practices insurance, we'll send those cases out through the carrier, or we'll make an agreement that we will handle those cases in-house, but ultimately, if they reach a certain level, the carrier will then be responsible, because it's essentially, I believe it's a $500,000, is it a $500,000 limit on employment practices? I think the first $500,000 we absorb, so we may handle that case in-house. But you need to have the litigators in-house. The outside litigators will cost the city approximately $100 to $200 an hour more than the fully loaded benefit cost of an attorney in-house. In 1997, we did a study in-house. It took about four to five months to complete that study. That study demonstrated that even with the least expensive outside attorney, that not only the hourly rate of the in-house counsel, but we factored in anything you would have in a private law office, rent, workers' compensation, attorney malpractice, utilities, we've just, we essentially pretended we were an in-house office and factored in all the costs. Even with those costs factored in, we were still about $26 an hour cheaper than retaining outside counsel. And what we did is we went actually to a, I will call it a, sort of a faux RFP, where we went out to a couple of firms and said, if we were to give you all of our tort claims, how much would you charge us? So we would actually get hopefully even a cheaper hourly rate based upon the guaranteed quantity of the number of cases that were handled, and there would be some, hopefully some savings there. That was still $26 an hour more expensive. So the answer, the short answer is yes, we need that litigator. When that litigator left the office, we backfilled that with two part-time litigators.
Just if I may. When you contract out to, for a specific case, let's say, you, once that case is over, you're done with that contracted attorney and they're gone. However, if you have a staff who's there and you have less of a load for your litigation branch, let's say, then you're still paying that attorney. Were all those costs taken into consideration?
Yes. Right now, I think just the office is at the size it needs to be. There will always be cases. We could have 20 litigators, and there will always be cases that are going to have to be sent out to outside counsel, based upon either the volume involved or the complexity. Even the city of Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, which with their hundreds of lawyers, I will say, use this phrase, suck up many outside law firms in their outside cases because they just are either too complex, they don't have the technical expertise in-house, or they're just voluminous, based upon the nature of the case. We will still have to do that. Our goal is to have the right number of attorneys litigating cases for the city so that the general cases that you find filed against the city of Glendale size, what I'll call the more moderate or routine cases, trip and falls, police excessive force cases, auto accident type cases, those, will stay in-house and will have the ability to handle those. We're still going to have to send out the more complex or voluminous cases, regardless of how much attorneys we have, and we might have to send out a lesser amount of the voluminous cases, but with the number of litigators we have, and with, if we fill the vacant position, we'll have a total of three. Three for a city of approximately 200,000. That's for our office, for example, even with the transactionals, that's one attorney for about every 15,000 residents. So we think we're actually doing a, I hate to use the expression because it's been used before, but we're fairly lean, but I think the position is necessary, because otherwise, we're just going to be sending cases out to outside counsel. It's going to be costing us more.
Is it one of these positions that has been frozen and set to be eliminated?
Actually, the one, the one position, the removal of the chief assistant city attorney position, and I want to say it was removed in the disciplinary sense, the person retired, that position has now been vacated, and we are not refilling that position, and we have not. And there will be a vacancy within the next couple of months as well in the City Attorney's Office.
We will not be replacing that. Cannot be replaced.
There'll all be a vacancy. Well, we can all be replaced, but there'll be a vacancy. We also downgraded a legal secretary position into an office services secretary, which saves approximately $6,000 a year on the average, I mean, depending on the step levels. It's approximately $6,000. These are our outside contractors, and again, we did not include outside counsel here because we don't consider them to be an outside contractor. As Councilman Nukian rightly noted, we retain them on a case-by-case basis. When the case is over, they're gone. These are essentially our annual contracts, court reporter services, messenger service, attorney service, a translation service, if you will, interpreter service, our photocopy service for record subpoena. And last, we put our online legal research in there. Generally, we don't kind of consider them to be a contractor. We consider it to be a necessity, since we essentially, as most law firms have done, have gone away from the paper and the books and the libraries to more, to electronic research, but we have included it here just for your information. We didn't put the costs in, and if you're interested in the costs, I do have them. It's essentially, it's an average cost per year. If you're interested, I'd be happy to provide it. Next slide, please. Our proposed budget for fiscal year 2011, 2012, as you note, it's there, the increase of $156,000, that's 4.4%. As we go to the next slide, we'll talk about the reasons for that. This just demonstrates the full-time equivalent employees that we have in the office. I've noted in the bottom, the actual supervising attorneys. The attorneys from the assistant city attorney level up, our management level staff under the definition, the broad definition of management. In narrowing it down to management in terms of who actually supervises someone, we have six supervising attorneys. I have eight attorneys who are considered essentially management slash professional staff, one supervisor, that's the legal services supervisor, and then a paralegal who'd be considered a member of professional staff as well. The, our, dividing our budget up into our three core divisions, the transactional budget, as you notice, there is an increase in the salaries. That increase comes from standard step increases for three of the employees that occur on a year-to-year basis. The newer attorneys, as they move through their tenure, they get a step increase each year if they're performing at meet standards or above. They have been, and so that just reflects a traditional step increase, and I think those are built into the budget. Mr. Elliott's nodding in the affirmative. We do have a small figure for hourly wages, and that is only in case we have either a case or transactional matter that is. and that is only in case we have either a case or transactional matter that is, requires the necessity of a, one of the legal secretaries--
$824?
Yes.
Why even bother?
It's a placeholder, so--
Overtime $515. Are you serious?
It's minimal. We try to keep overtime at zero, but there's just that rare occasion where we need it. Either we have a secretary that's doing some transcription of a hearing or an investigation that was done.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just pointing out--
Small.
The amount of, you know, $2 million budget with a $500 overtime.
It's called--
I understand. He's not being precise. He's not being precise. He's just plugging in what was there last year--
Yes.
Which is fine in this instance, and I don't have any objection to it, but--
It's, it's an effort to try to reflect--
Put zero in if you have--
It's, it's an effort to try to reflect, as I think the city manager noted, accuracy and transparency, to let you know that there may be a need for overtime, but we do try to keep overtime at a minimum, if not zero.
Were there actually overtime? I know we have the adopted budget of 2010, 2011.
I'm, I'm--
I can see her nodding.
He's nodding in the affirmative. We have some overtime.
How much? Do we have a number?
Almost about four hours for a legal secretary.
For last year, for the current fiscal year?
Yes.
I object to that.
If I had robes on, I would rule on the objection, but since I don't, the objection has to be sustained. It's a council member.
You want to repeat that, Scott? I don't know if the audience heard it.
The hours, the hours. Four hours of overtime.
It was four hours of overtime in the last fiscal year.
Yeah, TB.
As you know, the PERS and benefits are, and finance certainly has already talked about that. That's something that's just plugged into the budget through finance. It's nothing we can, can really control. Our MNO actually went down by seven, or is proposed to go down by about $7,800, and I believe that was due to a decrease in our telephone budget and the liability insurance, as it gets cost allocated through different departments. We're a less, I guess, lesser risk of having accidents and creating a need for coverage, and as you know, we have no capital outlay. The budget for our litigation staff, again, there's a salary decrease, and that's reflected by the carrying of the vacancy, I believe, on the books. The vacancy is carried at a lower cost than an actual filled position, so it, it's just reflected as a decrease. Again, hourly wages, we do sometimes have hourly individuals, but it's, again, it's a $733 figure.
Why, why is the vacancy carried at a lower cost?
The vacant positions are usually put in at step one, and same thing with insurance. We just put a placeholder in there, depending on what the individual would choose.
And in, in general practice, when you hire an individual, it's not at step one?
Um--
Depending on their qualifications?
Generally speaking, it's anywhere from step one to three, depending on their qualifications. So you'll see it anywhere between those, those three steps, generally speaking.
Okay. And likewise, with the PERS and the benefits, that's something that's just generally increased. This is just the pro-rata increase as it's, as it relates to the litigation function, and MNO, slight increase of $468 for that transactional. And that's more of a matter of reflecting over the years of money moving between the transactional litigation and the code enforcement function of where it should be. So it really doesn't reflect an actual increase of $460 overall. It's just moved money. It's money that would be moved from one section to the other. Lastly, our code enforcement budget, as you see, it's a slight increase of $1,127. I believe that's based on a, a step increase to the deputy city attorney. We have no hourly register overtime in that section. Again, PERS benefits, PERS and benefits are something that's plugged into the budget pursuant to the increases that we're all feeling as a result of that. Our MNO budget, again, has gone down there by $2,000, decrease. The totals, it's actually a fairly small budget for that section, it's about $21,500. So our, we've, in categorizing our function as essential priority and discretionary, naturally, my, our first instincts are to characterize all attorneys as essential. And in looking at, in trying to honestly look at our function, litigation, as I noted, and I'll start with them before the transactional, litigation, we determine that all litigation function is essential, until I see a court decision that indicates, based on budgetary considerations, you can default on a lawsuit. We have to have litigators, whether they're in-house or outside counsel, to respond to lawsuits. And as our studies have noted, and I, and I think they're even more true today, given what I know my hourly rate is in talking to some individuals in HR, it's cheaper to have in-house counsel than, than outside counsel, to, as litigators. The transactional side, we, again, looked at our charter responsibilities to approve as to form all contracts, and our function to draft and assist in the drafting of legislation, drafting of opinions, and other matters, assisting and advising, whether it be the council, boards and commissions, or staff. We determined that the function itself and the program itself is essential as well. Likewise, with code enforcement, we were, we made sure that we were aligned with our community planning department, community development department, that, the name has changed so many times over the last year. Sometimes I may get it wrong. That department, they listed their code enforcement function as essential, and we were aligned with that, because if we were to list that as priority or discretionary, you would have code enforcement officers on the administrative end sending letters out noting that if you don't comply, then that will be referred to the city attorney's office. If we eliminated a code enforcement position, it would be, it would not take long for people to realize that it's an idle threat. And so we, like the, like community development, listed our code enforcement function as essential. Next slide, please. We did determine, however, that if absolutely necessary, we could eliminate a transactional attorney position. What that would do, that would save $145,000, well, that's the savings, actually, on cost allocation, I believe it would be a general fund savings of $25,000, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, approximately $25,000 in the general fund.
That's not the, the position that's vacant.
That is correct. It's not. It's not. The vacant position is litigation.
Litigation.
This is transactional, and there, there is, there are bodies there. Next slide, please. We're not recommending that, because, one, there's a service level implication to that. It would definitely slow down the response time to departments seeking review and approval of contracts. It potentially could affect their operations. It certainly would slow down opinions to the departments. But again, trying to be honest with the need for service level reductions. If it was absolutely necessary, that would be a service level reduction that the internal service departments would just have to live with if that occurred. As I noted before, I think our office is right-sized at this point. Everybody is working at full capacity. I would say 100%, and some even higher than that. They work long hours and they're very dedicated. So our recommendation is, based on the fact that it's only a $25,000 savings, our recommendation was to not remove that position. There's also another consideration. I don't think it's been mentioned here in other presentations. Under civil service rules, there's, for classifications, there are bumping rights. So any layoffs that occur would actually--
Classifications of what?
Bumping rights.
Bumping rights.
That individuals in a classification are allowed, based on tenure, seniority, can bump down, and Mr. Doyle can either correct me or elaborate on this in greater detail. Where an individual who's in a classification is laid off, they can actually bump down to lower-level classifications. So it becomes like dominoes, where ultimately, the lowest-tenured individual in the classification goes. I describe that as ultimately adding up with a square peg in the round hole, because individuals who, for a number of years, have been trained in a particular position, because they may have seniority, will move down to a position that they have not trained for, and actually eliminate a position which individual has less seniority, but has been put into that position. We've actually had a number of conversations about why, unfortunately, it's a charter. We're limited by the charter, so we have to allow for seniority to be able to do that, but it does leave for some interesting end games when you actually start engaging in layoffs, and it needs to be considered. So we're not recommending that. So our budget in, in total, we've listed our essential services as $3.5 million. We've actually, we've listed the $145,000 priority there. We've determined there is no real discretionary positions within the office. Eliminating either one or more of the, one or more of the functions just means that those functions are going to have to go to outside counsel, which will ultimately cost the taxpayers more money, and in likelihood, at all likelihood, would reduce, in litigation, it would reduce some responsiveness. In transactional, it will definitely reduce responsiveness. I know a number of city attorneys who are contract city attorneys for smaller cities, and they're as responsive as they can be, but not being in-house means you're going to have to contact them. They may be out representing someone in another city. If you have an urgent need for an opinion or trying to get them to respond, it's not going to happen that quickly, because it's, one, every time they pick up the phone, they're going to be billing you at either 10th or 6th of an hour, unless you have a blanket single-fee contract, or they're just going to be engaged in other things where they can't respond as quickly as in-house counsel can, whether that be to a department or members of the city council. So our proposed budget reduction is zero. Our proposed budget is $3.7 million. And it was a perfect timing. I actually asked someone to call right when I got to the end of this slide. My time is up. Thank you. And you're right, my time is up. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond. Any comments?
I have a card. Unless anyone has a question right now?
If, if I may, Madam Mayor, if you had to do a reduction, that position of transactional position, would you be able to put the transactional attorney to the litigation side and continue like that?
No. I mean, a straight answer is no. One of the reasons individuals choose to do transactional work is either because they don't feel, or they're not skilled in litigation, or they don't like it. There are many people that have been litigators and they burn out, and they'll try to move over into a transactional side, so that, because they just don't like the, the pressure, if you will, and stress of litigation. Other people thrive on it. They, they love the courtroom environment, and they like to get in there and sort of mix it up with the opposing side, but it's--
So on your transactional--
Sometimes it's like mixing oil and water.
On your transactional side, there is no one that wants to go to litigation?
Now, I haven't asked that specific question, but I can tell you, some of the people that are on the transactional side, I know one, for example, very specifically, was a former litigator, and did not want to do it any longer. It, it, it's a different type of stress. That's very particular. I, I can tell you, I grew up in those environments as a litigator. It is a different type of stress, unlike transactional attorneys. And so many attorneys focus on just providing advisory work, opinions, drafting. They are not inclined to want to try to get into court and try to convince a judge or jury, and mix it up in a much more, I would say, adversarial environment. It is, yeah, it's very difficult to move someone unless they really felt that they wanted to. And there's a big, there's a learning curve if you haven't been involved in litigation. You know, evidence code, civil procedure, it's a lot different. As I indicated, there's also another reason, and I'm being very candid here, why we're not recommending any budget reductions. There will be a vacancy coming up in August. So I really see no reason to disrupt the office by removing one of a member of what I think is a terrific, a terrific staff, when you're going to be losing essentially the highest-paid individual in the office in a few months. With that, again, any further questions or comments? If there's any additional data, as I pointed out to the council, it is online on our website through our annual report, and I think you'll, you'll be pleased with the next annual report, which will have even more data for you, and the public. The public equally is important.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Let me go to the public, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I have a few questions with regard to this budget. I want to know if there is a report that breaks down the legal costs by department. Are there attorneys assigned to the, to police or any other department that is not included in this particular budget here? In other words, they're assigned to the specific department, but not included in the city's, city attorney's budget. I want to know if, where, where the judgments against the city are recorded, and whether or not they should be included as part of the performance measures of this department. Is there a report on the legal cost to the city as a result of employee lawsuits against the city? Is there a report that tells us about outside legal firms, what those costs are, and who are those payments made to? What are the trends in judgments against the city as a result of employee lawsuits against the city in the past 10 years? How is the city's effectiveness measured in reducing a, sexual harassment lawsuits, discrimination lawsuits, and lawsuits against the Glendale Police Department? What is the city's potential liability and legal cost due to the non-compliance, or apparent non-compliance to the equal employment opportunity laws in the hiring of minorities, specifically Armenians in the Glendale Fire Department? Of, through one of the public records I request that I made, it showed that there were over 40 vacancies in the Glendale Fire Department created, in other words, people who left the, the fire department since 1998. But apparently, according to the records, the last records that I have, there are only two new sworn positions in the Glendale Fire Department that were Armenian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nukian?
A point that was brought up, and that is, are any of the budgeting of staff not included in this budget presentation, or any of it in other, in other departments?
Well, I can turn to Mr. Ali for part of that, but all of our staff, for example, I have specific staff assigned to specific departments, and 100% of their time, the ones that are actually assigned to the specific departments are dedicated to those departments. For example, two attorneys for Public Works, one for Water and Power, one for Police, one to redevelopment, although part of her time is probably allocated to a cup, to some planning, to some planning issues.
Are there costs allocated? What, what I want to know is, are all the attorney's costs allocated through your department, and then those allocated through internal service funds?
Yes.
Okay. So all, all the costs are here. There are no costs that we're not seeing for the city attorney's office?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I can respond to that. Several years ago, it was the city's practice, not only for attorneys, but some of the folks in my shop, we budgeted all our portions of them in the respective other departments.
Right.
We have since changed that, brought them all back to the general fund and the departments such as city attorney's office, and we run them through our citywide cost allocation plan. So the costs are in the general fund, but they're allocated back to the specific funds in which these attorneys serve, whether it's Public Works or whatever, outside the general fund, and that's all reflected within the cost allocation. So the, the total cost of the city attorney's office is in the city attorney's budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Where are we going next? Library. Okay. It's clearing.
We, we need to have a conversation here first, though, because we're going to be taking up, what I'd like to do, based on the comments council members have made in a couple of the last meetings about the Casa Verdugo library, I've asked Cindy to come back, because you've heard her budget presentation, but it's obvious we have some views on what is essentially the, the bulk of her department's request for the upcoming year. As a result, we wanted to come back and have Cindy talk to you again and get council direction on her budget. We know Mr. Nukian may have a conflict of interest, as that relates--
Mr. Najarian.
--to Mr. Najarian may have a conflict of interest, so we'll need to discuss that before Cindy gets into her presentation.
I know. We're going to talk about Chevy Chase Library, because I'm very unclear in terms of the proposal and what it means to the services of Chevy Chase.
Yeah, we'll be talking about that as well.
Chevy, we, we want to talk--
Chevy Chase.
You're--
I'm sorry. The Casa Verdugo, I might have said Chevy Chase. Casa Verdugo is a potential conflict for Mr. Najarian.
But anyone living near a library or council member having conflict in this instance?
Not necessarily. Your single-family residents, for example, if, if you were within 1,000 feet of the library, we would have to look at that, but that could be treated, with a situation involving Councilman Najarian, it involves a commercial piece of property adjacent to Casa Verdugo Library.
Commercial is treated differently than residential.
Not necessar, not, in some circumstances, yes, but not necessarily. The, the primary issue is distance. Number, that's the first issue you look at, is distance. If you're outside the 1,000-foot bubble, so to speak, or radius, then it's presumed not material. It's not presumed to be, it's presumed not to be a conflict, but if you're within that 1,000 feet, the question is whether or not it's, it creates a reasonably foreseeable material financial effect on your, your financial interests, which include real property interests. I don't know how far Mr. Nukian's house is from Chevy Chase Library.
A bird's flight could be it.
Well, yeah, when, that's actually, and there's other potential extenuating circumstances. If you're separated by a ridge or a hillside, even though you may be within 1,000 feet, it's highly unlikely that it's going to create any kind of conflict if that library is closed. But the impact of, of closing a building next to a commercial building is, it's a presumed conflict.
Okay.
So, and as I understand it, and I can certainly be corrected by this query, that the first six slides of our presentation are general slides that don't relate specifically at all to Casa Verdugo. When you get to the seventh slide, I believe it begins to get into proposals, and at that point in time, I believe there may be a necessity for Mr. Najarian to announce the potential conflict of interest and leave the dimes.
And then can we bring him back when we talk about Chevy Chase and other--
Here's what we need to do. The, what, the way the, the rules are written, there's a, what they call segmentation. And if you can put to rest, once and for all, what you're going to do about Casa Verdugo, and the options involving it, whether it's close it, reduce its hours, but however you deal with it, if you can deal with that first and put it to bed completely-- but however you deal with it, if you can deal with that first and put it to bed completely, Mr. Najarian is permitted by law to come back and address any other issue in the budget. What you can't do later on in the budget, for example, is, well, let's swing back to Casa Verdugo, because then it creates a, a real potential issue. And what we, what we, I think what the council should do, and my, and my advice is to work through Casa Verdugo, the issues involving it, make a final decision for this budget year. Doesn't mean you're locked into it forever, but at least for this budget year, determine what you're going to do with it. And then we can have Mr. Najarian come in and participate in all the other aspects of the budget.
Quick question, because that makes it rather cumbersome. You do have a public hearing that you're going to need to hold before you adopt the budget. So it may seem you're, you're making some definite decisions about budget prior to the public hearing. But I'm a little concerned, because it's just dawned on me, we're missing a council member. And not knowing where any of you will be, but we have heard comments from some of you individually about this matter, we may get to a point here today where you'd be giving us direction on potentially a, less than a majority of the city council. So maybe we want to hold off the library discussion until Mr. Quintero is back and we have a full city council.
Let me just be clear. When the budget comes back to us as an entire package, it will include some decision about the Casa Verdugo Library. Does that mean that Mr. Najarian has to recuse himself from voting on the entire budget?
Actually, no. My recommendation is that you deal with Casa Verdugo first. And it's called segmenting. You segment out that portion dealing with Casa Verdugo. Whether you make that decision at the review of the final budget or at an earlier point in time, you put it to bed, so that there's going to be no change. Essentially, it becomes immutable, at least for a period of time while that, while your entire budget is discussed and you decide on the budget. Once we get Casa Verdugo behind us, Mr. Najarian or anyone else, for example, that has a conflict, is then permitted to come back in and discuss all of those areas where there is no conflict.
If I can, including the implications of that decision. But that decision will be a given, and you won't be able to come back and essentially change the decision unless, again, Mr. Najarian steps out.
Right. And that's, well, but you've got to be cautious with that, because as, as the FPBC has noted, both in the rule and in the decisions, if it's inextricably intertwined, you can't pull it apart and then come back together and then start pulling it back in together.
Here's the problem. Casa Verdugo is $200 and some thousand. Granted, a relatively small chunk of an $18 million deficit, but it's going to cause other adjustments in the budget, because it's a zero-sum game essentially. In the same way with Chevy Chase or any other program in the budget, if the council makes the decision, we're not going to implement some reduction, then we have to go back and make changes in the overall budget and come back to you with either other cuts or other strategies to close it. So it's going to have a ripple effect in the entire budget. Not a large one, but if the council makes the decision, Casa will remain open in some form. That's going to have an economic impact that we need to go back and address in the budget.
If I can, Madam Mayor, and that's, and following up with, with Mr. Starbird's comments, that's the decision that needs to be made first on Casa Verdugo. And so whatever implications flow from that are fine.
Okay.
And Mr. Najarian could participate in that, but it just needs to, you just need to know-
Casa becomes a given.
Casa becomes a given, whether it's remain open, whether reduced hours, whatever it is. Want, you need to, the expression would be put it to bed and get it out of the way at least for this period where you discuss the budget and ultimately adopt the budget. It's done, then Mr. Najarian can participate in the entire discussion involving the rest of the budget in its entirety, except for what you put to bed on Casa Verdugo.
Now, with that, I am a little concerned, however, that we are lacking Mr. Quintero on what is going to be a final decision about Casa Verdugo.
Why don't we keep library for another day when we have a full council? Maybe in the meanwhile, Mr. Najarian will decide to sell his property so that this will-
And actually, the 12-month rule doesn't apply to sell real property.
Let me just make a comment about the process and not the particular item. Let's say that there is an item that council decides to hold immutable and to fund. And let's say the solution to that funding, filling that gap would be from something such as dipping into our reserves to do that. Would I be foreclosed from discussing the, the general premise and notion of dipping into reserves to bring into the general, into our general fund, the funds necessary to fund that one item?
In my opinion, no. So long as the issue which triggers the conflict is done. Once the issue of Casa Verdugo is done, whatever that decision is, it's done by others with you conflicted out. If that decision is done, everything else you can be involved in. Because unless anything else that you do affects Casa Verdugo, that's why you have to deal with that Casa Verdugo decision, you, meaning the rest of the council, have to deal with that first, conclude it, and then, because that would then be segmented off and done, you're then permitted, under FPBC regulations, to be, to participate in the rest of the budget, including whether do we take from reserves, do we, you know, cut the city manager, we cut the city attorney, whatever you, you can participate in that.
So using that example, and let's say, let's say what we brought back to you was utilize reserves, and Mr. Najarian objected to utilizing reserves, and some of you agree, you could direct me to then go find other means of, of closing that gap other than using reserves. But it couldn't come back to Casa Verdugo again.
Okay. Why don't we move on to Information Services?
Can I ask a question before, as they're coming up? Can we vote, the final vote, can we vote on a department basis, or do we have to vote on the whole budget?
Well, you will have to pass on the entire budget. It's required by charter.
Required by charter to pass on the entire budget. However, the purpose of these study sessions, I think, are to allow you, when you actually get to a point, to be able to say, you know, we've looked at that department budget, I don't like these. I mean, you can kind of decide how you want to handle-
If one department's budget I don't agree with, do I have to vote on the whole budget? Can I vote on the-
Budget's presented under our charter as an entire budget.
Okay.
It's not, it's not presented in piecemeal fashion. I think we can probably, at a study session, provide direction under one of the wrap-up study sessions-
We already do that.
What I would anticipate is, we're going to have a wrap-up session, department, actually, more than department by department, but all the various reductions and strategies. And the council can give me direction on each of those at whatever level you want. Now, it may be that, that a council member will take a position to change something, and if there's not support by the whole council, that will be part of the budget.
I understand the process. It's just-
Okay.
The voting, the actual voting itself, I was wondering, because I've never seen it done before, whether you can vote on a department basis.
And generally, you haven't. The charter, the charter requires that I present to you a budget and requires that you adopt it. If you, if you don't adopt it, you've got to send me back with instructions to do something different.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fraga.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ed Fraga, Information Services Director, and here to present to you our proposed budget for this coming fiscal year. This will close in on nearly two years that I have been with the city, as many of you know. And over the course of that time, we've made a number of improvements and changes through, to the Information Services Department. I will highlight some of those as we go along in this presentation and try to give you a context for the detail of this budget. There you see our outline of the various items we're going to talk about. They're pretty much follow the standard outline that all the departments are following. So we'll just go on to the neck, the first one of those, mission statement and core services. And our mission statement is to provide leadership in information technology with a focus on providing strategic direction on technology issues, leading technology innovation initiatives, while responsibly managing the city's technology infrastructure, its applications, and maintaining the highest level of reliable service to the community. Our core services are in information technology, services and policy to all city departments and related agencies. These include computer applications, infrastructure, as well as public safety radios and mobile phones. The functions that we perform are divided into three categories. And what you'll see shortly is that those three categories also happen to be the divisions of the department. So the first of those listed is the applications. These are some of the largest applications in the city and those to which we are directly responsible for. And what you will observe is that these tend to be what we call enterprise applications, that is, things that are used by multiple departments and are critical to many, many people in the cities. The first of those is GIS, that's geographic information systems. That is an application that is nearly infrastructure. What it is, is it's a very large, complex database that retains mapping information as to locations without, within the city of various types, either X, Y coordinates, addresses, every type of geographic designation. And to those are tied features, things particularly that the city owns and operates, and where they are located. This enables us to look at and perform eventually geographic data analysis. This is being used extensively by the police department these days in the whole area command program. They rely heavily on the ability to be able to take a variety of information and look at it in a geographic manner and determine, for example, where crimes are likely to occur. It relies on this. This is also used by the next item there, permits and licenses. We need to know and have correct addresses and know where the buildings are and what permit is being issued for which purpose. That is itself an application, a very large application, one that we have successfully implemented just recently, this past year, in the Building and Safety Department. We'll talk more about that.
If I may, GIS is basically the map of the city, is that-
Yes. It's a map and a database. It's a special-
Other programs like Google?
Yes, we could use other programs like Google. But this is, this is ESRI. This is a company out of Redlands. It is the world's leading company in GIS databases, virtually all governments. And pretty much everyone around, around the world uses this database structure. We are not opposed to looking at and, and using Google Maps as a very quick and easy way. It does not have the data accuracy that we need when we do legal matters here in the city. And so we need to be able to know definitively our own data and that it is exactly correct. We integrate deeply with the assessor's files to be sure we get proper information from them on boundaries and borders. And we are working with GWP, with their electric grid, with water grid. We're going to be working with Public Works on the sewer grid and the wastewater grid. All of those things need to be laid out and known by us in detail here.
If I may, a number of years ago, as I remember it correctly, we were doing the data entry into the GIS system. So we're updating, or is there a service that provides-
We, we do that. We do a lot of that ourselves. And what we want to do is build it into the business processes of the city, so that as things occur, as changes are made, for example, in that whole permitting area, we're right now in the midst of that. And one of the things I want to eventually bring to the council is we need to-
No, it's the GIS that I'm referring to, not the permitting. Do, do we enter the information ourselves, or is there a service that provides that information?
We do get some information from a Dataquick.
Okay.
We get information from the assessor electronically. We also do some entry ourselves.
Thank you.
The next item there is HR Finance. That's human resources. That, and Finance, that is actually our PeopleSoft system. It is, includes not only human resources but payroll. It includes accounting. It includes purchasing, accounts payable, accounts receivable, asset management, project costing, and a number of other modules, and a couple of which we just acquired recently and will, we will be implementing further as the year goes on. We'll talk about those in a minute. This is a very successful application. It was not originally, when it was brought to the city some years ago, as I understand. But today it is functioning very, very well.
The cost of the PeopleSoft system, does it go through IS?
Yes.
And it's allocated to-
Exactly. It actually, yes. And a large portion of that gets allocated to the Finance Department. And then their allocation allocates it to everyone else.
But the cost goes through-
Yes.
Information technology first.
Yes. Yes. Document Management, that's our FileNet system. That is the repository for documents. We have, we'll see a little, a little later the numbers on that, but there are nearly 2 million documents in that system. And it is a, recently this year, we upgraded that to a new version of the product, which is much more web-enabled. So it does open the possibility of exposing documents to the world. We have to take some significant care in that, because the security now needs to be managed very closely. But that was, that is what we call our most, our hottest-selling product. Departments are, use it across the, across the city. There's a great demand. They want more of it. We simply don't have enough resources to, to do the actual scanning of these documents. And furthermore, I think what the real solution is, is we need to build document scanning into the business processes. What happens today is it's, we're trying to drain the bathtub while, while water's coming in, because the, what's happening is the documents scanning is happening at the end of the business process rather than at the beginning of the business process. So it's an after the fact. We will never catch up. So there's a huge-
Never say never.
Pardon?
Never say never.
Okay. There is a, there is a huge business process and organizational change to make that happen.
We, we were just talking about document management with the city, with the city clerk's office.
Yes.
You coordinate with the city clerk's office?
Yes. And we, we do very much. And in fact, we're, we're going to be looking at the licensing processes in the city clerk's office and automating those this year.
How much of these documents are available to the public?
I don't know that number.
That's not-
We can, we can look that up to find out.
So FileNet is not available to the public?
No.
Public cannot access that?
Right. What we do is, we do take documents from there and we put them on the website.
Right. But the program itself, FileNet itself, is not available to the public?
No, that's right. There is possibilities there, but we would have to-
That was the next question. Would it be, could it be available in terms of-
Yes, could be, yes.
That would have to be a council decision, I guess, to-
Oh, absolutely. And we would want to be very careful about how the security, what got exposed, yes. Web development, this is our website. And we, there are a few other websites in the city. Our current website is a kind of an amalgamation of websites. They are not, it's not, got a lot of consistency. It's, it's showing its age. We have on the docket for this coming year to revamp the style of it and to make it more user-friendly, bring in some of the more modern techniques. And also, we want to look at beginning to do online transactions. That's something that should be happening. We know we have possibilities and what we can do. There, again, it's a matter of having enough staff time to do that.
I, I don't, I don't know if you're aware that the website started with the libraries. I don't know.
Yes. In fact, we, as I understand, ISD stole a bunch of people from the library.
Yes. And, and until today, when I do a search on the city's website to come up with the city's charter, I still can't get the charter.
Oh.
You know, it comes up with little pieces and all that, but if I want the charter as a one whole PDF document, I can't, I can't find it.
I think we can do something about that.
Okay.
The help desk is internal help for city staff. We only provide what was known as Level One Help Desk. Help desks come in Level Ones, Two and Three. Level One is typically things like, I don't know my password. Level Two gets into a little bit more, let me step you through this, how to make this happen, how to, how to do this, sort of thing. Level Three is, hmm, there might be something wrong. We've got to get a real expert on this. We only do Level-
Like the wireless is not working in the council chambers?
I'm going to talk about that very item, actually. It's in my slides. The, so we do Level One Help Desk here in the city of Glendale. We, there's a number of reasons for that. And when I get to some other slides, we'll, we'll step back and look at where is Glendale versus other cities, for example, in terms of the way in which we conduct ISD and what can be done about it. Infrastructure, this is the, the nuts and bolts stuff, the stuff that people don't see, but which makes everything run. Operations includes basically the management, care and feeding of all the servers in the city, the, the network itself, all of those kinds of components, plus the security on all of that. And security goes across the entire area. Project management is setting up and doing new information, infrastructure projects. PC services, this is something that in Glendale has been distributed. And we have a number of people throughout the city and throughout the departments. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But it is basically the care and feeding of the PCs, includes laptops and so on. Telephone services, this is the landlines of the city. We have quite an extensive landline system. The city has a number of buildings, not only here in the civic center, but around the city, all of which need to be- all of which need to be serviced by this group. It's a very small group, and they do a tremendous job. We'll talk a little bit more about what they've done this past year to help the city. Finally, wireless communications. This is the public safety, police and fire radios and that radio system. It also includes the radio systems of water and power, Public Works, recreation and parks, and a few other of the departments. Moreover, it includes support for ISIS, and we'll talk about ISIS, the Interoperability, inter-agency communications interoperability system. And finally, this group handles the mobile phones that are issued to employees.
How many phones do we, oops. Let's talk about those phones. How many phones are out there? I know the city of LA has taken steps to review the number of phones issued, and I think have taken some dramatic steps towards that.
If, you're talking about mobile phones?
Mobile.
Yes, I have those numbers coming up in a slide shortly. It's about 500, I'd have to look, about 570, something like that, 75. And I'll break them down if you'd like when we get there. Why don't we go to the next slide?
Just for the record, we're talking about the cell phones. I turned my BlackBerry down in my efforts to contribute to the budget shortfall, and I'm using my own phone.
We will talk about that in a moment, about--
I declined my iPad, which was generously offered by the city manager's office.
You were offered an iPad?
You were offered an iPad?
I'm--
He must be thinking of one of the many boards he serves on.
We actually don't have iPads. I think the total city ownership of iPads is three, two of which are in the fire department and one is in ISD. The rest of the iPads you see around the city are owned and operated by the employees. With regard, this is our overriding organizational structure. We have four people in administration, that's myself, the assistant director, an analyst and a clerk, and those people are actually not in an org. They are distributed to these three orgs below. What we did is, and we'll talk about a little later, is when I got here, there were, in fact, nine different places where ISD was budgeted. Most of it was in the general fund. It was neither fish nor fowl. Some of it was internal service funds, and we have, with the help of Mr. Elliott and his team, we have spent quite an effort to get that consolidated into these three buckets that you see at the bottom there, the applications, the infrastructure and the wireless. There you see the number of staffing in each of these areas, totaling 61 and 1/2 FTEs. That includes hourlies. If, I haven't got the exact number, but it's about six or seven of those are hourly people, about 10%, and they're distributed across these areas. Before we go too much further, though, I would like to give you, before we get into the numbers in detail, I thought, as I was looking at this whole presentation, it occurred to me that there is a lot of detail here, but it's important, before we look at that detail, to have an overriding picture. What is, what are the issues and what are we trying to solve? So I'd like to take a moment to talk to you about that. When I got here two years ago and started really looking at ISD and what the character of it was in Glendale, what I discovered was that over the years, there had been a certain amount of distribution of IT activity, which seemed to work fairly well in some regards, but not in others. What I found was that the application services group was actually working pretty darn well. They were effective in what they did. They were not covering everything that there was in the city, but in the things that they did, they had done a marvelous job, and we'll talk about some of those accomplishments. In the wireless communications, I have to say that I don't think anyone will find any finer group of people doing this kind of work anywhere. They are truly world-class, and what they have done in Glendale is phenomenal. It's something that I think should be seen as a model, not only for the region but really for the country as a whole. I can't emphasize how impressed I am with that group and the works they have done and how well-organized. And I found very quickly, I didn't really need to worry too much about the wireless group. However, in infrastructure, what I found is what is called the tragedy of the commons. Tragedy of the commons is when you have a grazing field that everyone owns, and everyone's allowed to have their sheep graze on that field, everyone does, and they will graze it until there is nothing left to graze because no one has responsibility for that which is common. What we found here in the--
A Shakespeare or something? That's very proper.
I'm not sure. But it is generally known as the tragedy of the commons. And this is what we have here in our infrastructure. The infrastructure has been allowed to languish for 10 years, maybe longer, in many regards, and I'll show you some of those different aspects. As well as the, this group has some really phenomenal, fantastic people in it, but not enough people, certainly not enough people doing the right kinds of jobs. So there was a certain amount of languishment there as well. Now, the problem with that is that when we try to then move forward, when we try to do things like Smart Grid, when we try to modernize the city's operations and the applications and make more available online to the public, we must first take care of the infrastructure. If we don't, we will be attempting to build a mansion on the foundation of a two-story, of a one-bedroom house, and one that's crumbling. We have serious problems in our infrastructure. We have things like single points of failures. We have distributed development of portions of it that just will not stand, especially for Smart Grid. When I get into some of that discussion about Smart Grid, you are aware, we have a 20-plus-million-dollar grant from the Federal Department of Energy. That grant calls for us to do certain items in certain ways, specifically in security, and they call for us to have certain quality in our systems. Curiously enough, though, it might, one might think that water and power operates by itself, it doesn't. It is, after all, a department of the city. Many of its business processes bleed over into and are part and parcel of the rest of the city, specifically things like our PeopleSoft system, totally part of what will be Smart Grid, but also part of the city. Our FileNet document management system, same thing. Our email system, same thing. So we need to fix some of the city's infrastructure. And what you see in the budget that I'm calling out for this coming year is a number of items to hit the most critical items for that purpose. So it will fix it for Smart Grid, but it will also fix it for the city as a whole. These are things that should have been done years ago. In the course of what I've looked at, by the way, in the last two years, we've replaced about 15% of the ISD staff, and in every case, we have, within the same amount of money, considerably upgraded the quality. We can expect that to continue probably, just by attritions and retirements and that sort of thing. And so our staffing is getting stronger. We've also tried to organize them in better ways. An example, in the Smart Grid area, something that we've had to do for Smart Grid that has now ended up helping the whole of the city, is they needed to have a storage area network. Storage area network, you think of your PC that you have, it's got a hard drive. On that hard drive, you have the operating system, you have applications, and you have your data. That's typically what we think. In very sophisticated, larger systems, you need to take that data portion and put it directly on the network and make it accessible to everyone. That way you can be much more efficient. That's called a storage area network. That's what we've had to acquire for Smart Grid, and in the course of doing that, it looks like, if you would physically look at it, it's like a very large Sub-Zero freezer, and it's got a lot of shelves in it. And we've acquired that. We've acquired a second one as a backup, and we, next week, not next week, but next month, we will move that backup one to the city of Burbank's data center. We have tested fiber between those two, private fiber between those two, and we will be able to have a remote site, real-time replication of everything that's going on for Smart Grid, certainly right now for AMI. And here's the point of that whole discussion, we can now leverage that for the rest of the city. Freezers have been bought. We can add shelves that will operate for the rest of the city. And so we're looking to do that kind of thing. A overriding principle that I believe works well for IT in municipal government, and as the council knows, before I came here, I spent 15 years in the private sector, most of that time with Gartner, and I saw a lot of state and local government implementations in IT. One of the principles I found that seems to work, because governments are much more complex than the private businesses, governments are in a whole series of businesses. They're more like a holding company. And they have needs that are very, very different, department-to-department, cultures that are very different, department-to-department, but they have commonality. They're all doing it in the same place for the same residents. One principle I find that makes a lot of sense is to do common functions centrally and to do unique functions in a distributed fashion. And what I've put together in this budget and what I've been doing in the last two years is trying to implement that general concept, and we'll see that play out in a number of areas. Finally, I'd like to make a comment, before we get into the numbers, that this budget calls for a reduction in ISD's charges to the general fund of $500,000 over last year. And the increases that are in this budget are in the non-general fund, largely, not surprisingly, in water and power for the Smart Grid project. That is convenient to the city as a whole. It was not specifically intended. The reason for that is that we are doing more work for Smart Grid. So we're doing more of that effort and less in the general fund.
Smart Grid is the smart meters, is that what we're talking--
That's the beginning of Smart Grid, yes, sir. The smart meters are automated meter interface, AMI. It is the beginning. It gives you the initial data. There is, and we can talk about that, I have a slide on the supplements of what is behind that that makes Smart Grid. It is a revolution in how the water and power department will operate.
Are those safe? Been a lot of--
Yes.
Discussion lately about uncontrolled radiation and EMFs and--
We have an expert here in RF and radio frequencies, and we can--
Are there any budget, let me ask you this. I guess the real question is, I mean, that's a big discussion. Are there any budget implications with an apparent pushback or refusal, whether it's reinstalling those or changing, you know, a frequency or shielding or, you know, you name it? Are there any budget implications for this apparent pushback we're getting from a few members of the--
Yeah, this is actually a water and power question, but I'll give my answer to it. They may want to give you a further and more detailed answer. There are about 12 of those refusals so far out of the 80,000 that have been installed. They will require then someone go around and read those, so there is a cost to that, to manually continue to read when we would otherwise not have a problem. Everything I've read about the RF situation is it's spurious, it's not an issue, but it may be in some people's minds, and eventually, hopefully, it comes around. We had, we heard the same kind of thing when microwaves first came out. People were concerned about having a microwave in their home, and you don't so much hear that anymore. So I think it's just fear of the new and the unknown. Answer your question, yes.
I don't want to get too far afield, but thank you.
So that was the last point I wanted to make on this slide was that, so you're going to see, we have an increase in our budget, but actually for the general fund, which is the key issue in terms of budgeting for the city, we're actually a decrease this year. Moving to the next slide. So this is showing you the organization of the applications group, so we can get into some of this detail now. As I indicated, GIS, we have six and a half people in that area. Permits and licenses, this is a growing area. We have just three people there, but this is getting implemented increasingly throughout departments. Help Desk and FileNet and Web Development, that's a group of 11. They do a lot of different things. That group has been very, very successful. And four people, only four people, maintaining the whole of the PeopleSoft system. PeopleSoft is one of three world-class, we call ERPs, Enterprise Resource Planning Systems, only one of three. These are the systems that are used by the largest corporations in the world. We are running one of those here in Glendale, and we're doing it with just four people. And we're doing it so smoothly, I think Mr. Elliott would agree, it seems to work pretty darn well. Our neighbors on both sides of us have had issues with this kind of thing, but--
How many employees do the world's largest companies have?
How many employees do the world's largest companies have? They're in the hundreds of thousands.
And we have approximately 2,500?
Yes.
So why would we need a software that is so big that takes--
That would have been probably a good question to ask in 2000, 2001?
I did.
Okay. I wasn't here. There were, at that time, and I saw this happen across the country, a lot of governments were going to these ERPs. Some learned to regret it. The city of Culver City went to what was called JD Edwards, which has now been subsumed under some of these others, but it was one of those, and they had a difficult, difficult time of it, not realizing that when you are doing, when you're using an application that is built for really large organizations, yeah, there's all kinds of capabilities.
All-bi-national.
Yes, that's right. But the good news is, we had a lot of pain there. It is implemented. It is working very well now, and we have the opportunity now to expand it and use more of the capabilities there. It can do a lot.
That was my next question.
Yes.
How much of it are we using?
Quite a lot. We're using all the core of it, but there are opportunities, and those opportunities require some changes in our business processes, and it takes time and effort and labor to do that, but the capabilities--
How much is it costing us a year?
How much is it costing? We, our maintenance is about $260,000 a year.
$234,000.
Pardon? $234,000.
And our upgrades annually?
Yes. Let me tell you about our upgrades. I was going to save this for another slide, but I'll--
Okay, no, that's fine if it's--
Well, you brought it up, so I don't want to forget it, so let's mention it. We just, this past year, we upgraded both sides of PeopleSoft, both the finance system and the payroll system. In 2006, the city felt necessary to go and hire a consultant to do that work, and it was on the, I think it was on the finance side, I have the notes here. That was a one-and-a-half-million-dollar upgrade. So if we had done both of them, it would have been about $3 million. It would have cost the city. We did equivalent upgrade this year with these four people in-house.
Okay.
So this department saved the city quite a lot.
The software didn't cost anything?
No, the upgrade did cost some money, yes.
That's what I was referring--
Yeah, oh, okay. The cost of the upgrade, I don't recall that. Okay, it was included in the maintenance costs.
Which is $264,000?
$234,000, yeah. So we're, now, you know, we've done the pain, now we need to do the gain.
Okay. After, it's okay.
And then we have a person that's in public safety, is in the police department, basically, and a portion of that person is in the application side, some of it's in the infrastructure side.
You know, let me ask another question regarding that, the system. Is there other systems we can use that can save us money as opposed to using this huge system that we continuously spend money on?
There is, all systems have upgrades, there's a constant process, yes.
All systems have annual maintenance costs, and I understand that. But is there a system that maybe we can spend $50,000 a year? It's a $200,000 system instead of a $3 million system? We can spend $25,000 to $50,000 annually for maintenance and upgrades?
There are systems, especially for smaller cities--
Like ours?
Smaller than us. There are systems out there that are designed specifically--
Have you looked at it? That's the basic question.
We haven't spent a lot of time looking at it. We haven't spent a lot of time looking at it, we could do that. Our general view is this, this system has now already cost us what it's going to cost us, and we can gain a lot more productivity by just exploring, exploring more of what's there. That's, that's our view. We'll show you some of things we're planning to do this coming up.
Exploring is the wrong word, I'd say utilizing.
Implementing.
Okay, implementing.
Yes, sir.
Exploring means you don't know what's there, you're going to explore.
No, 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 I, that was a misstatement on my part. Shall we go to the next slide? Infrastructure, this is the group that we talked about a little earlier. There's 5.4, too few people in operations and security. We have a project manager, and that's very, works very well. We have 13 people in the PC services. Now, this is a common, remember my principle about do common things centrally and unique things in a distributed way? Here we have a common thing, PC maintenance and support distributed. We have taken steps in the process of the Internal Service Fund, process of bringing those folks into the internal service costs, and so they're now in ISD for that purpose, and they're shown that way, and they're no longer in the department's budgets. But folks are still allocated out by department, even though they pay not by person but by service rendered. And that gets into the whole internal service structure. We proportion everything out, like for example, how many PCs you have, well that drives costs for our support for those, it drives costs for the network, it drives costs for a number of other things. There are other application support, how many licenses you have for each application. All of those go into the figuring out of what that charge is. In any case, we have perhaps more staffing there in a distributed fashion than would be if we changed our model. Telephone services, this is the landlines, there's just three hard-working guys that keep all of our phones and voicemail and everything working. Not only do they keep them working, they keep moving forward on this, and I have a very, very good story to tell you about, about that group. Next slide. This is the wireless, a tiny but powerful group, five guys, one supervisor, one administrator who is also the supervisor...
That's radios, not wireless.
Yes, it's wireless communication services, yes. And then we have two folks on the mobile phones, and I have to say that they also spend time on the billing and tracking on the landline phones. This is a classic situation in government. Landline costs you get largely from vendors. And what happens is, over time, you, you may discontinue a service, and the bill does not discontinue. There are companies that spend, will come in and they will, they will offer you, we will take 50% of what we find, cost you nothing, we will audit yours, and we will, we will make money. We are doing this ourselves in-house, and we have, over the course of the past year, with the help of these folks, been finding all kinds of things and eliminating them and improving and cutting our costs in telephone services.
If I may, could you, during your presentation, address the cost of maintaining the PCs, the operating systems on the individual PCs, the suites that are used within, within those PCs as well, like the Microsoft suites, Office Suite that we use?
Yes.
And any other costs that are associated with maintaining individual PCs throughout the, throughout the organization?
We have a cost...
Software costs.
Yeah, we have a cost for what they, what they, the hardware and software costs us. I may have to ask for some detail on that. And then there are the services costs, and we'll, we'll see if we can come up with that. Moving to the next slide. This is a breakdown in terms of management, mid-management, non-management, and hourly in the various areas, and the fractions of people are not, not because the people are fractioned, but because we've had to allocate people, the administration folks. The mid-management group, actually, 10 of those are just professional technical people, and, and five are professional technical people that supervise. We have a variety of different areas. So there's about 10 people that are doing either management or supervision out of the 61 folks. Next slide. This is the kind of overall look at our budget, and as you can see by the three groups, what our comparison is to last year, and the percent increase and decrease. Now, the application support group actually went down, and that's because last year we had some significant costs in that PeopleSoft upgrade and efforts in that area, that was one of the, the big factors. So they're actually slightly, slightly down this year.
Last year's contractual services were $1,413,000. Was that mostly for PeopleSoft? That's in the budget from last year?
Yeah, could, could we take that up when we get to that slide, it's coming up?
Okay, I thought that's the application support you were talking about then.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So in infrastructure, we are going up 30%, and that is largely, well, there's a certain amount of cost for staffing, the costs have gone up, but that's largely on infrastructure, projects that we need to do this year. And then in the wireless, 15%, that is also largely projects in hardening our wireless network, and we'll talk about those shortly. Here are, we put together some metrics on each of the groups, here's the applications group, just to give you an idea. GIS is more of a central function, though it's used by many, many applications, there's about 26 actual people that can log onto that system. The permits, I indicated to you that is increasing. We are now up to 511 people that use that, many of those are fire, firemen. We have just, this year brought the fire department up on a couple of systems, one is their pre-plan system, and the other is, they're about to go live with their company inspection system. We can talk more about that. Human resources, that is the HR system, and that is the number of people who can log on and do self-service and see their paycheck. As well as other functions, but largely that's what most people do. Finance, 560 users, so it's way beyond just the folks in the finance department, it's used throughout the city. And this, this is the kind of thing that really is very cost-effective, because everybody looks at the same numbers in the same place, and there's no disagreement about how, what those numbers should be. Document management, that's the file net system, 948, just about half of the staff in the city are, have access to that system and are querying documents. We also embed that system into applications so that, for example, you can look at a requisition and then click on the document that was explaining what that requisition was about. That's all being embedded into a variety of our applications. 1.8 million documents are in that system. About a quarter of those are police department, very sensitive documents. And then the rest is distributes out across the rest of the departments. Police department is increasing that at about 10,000 documents per month. So that one is growing very rapidly. All departments, though, are using this, not all departments, but many departments are using it, and it, it is growing continuously.
I'll say, are we from hacking? My, my poor son has been without his PS3 network for, I guess it's back on now, but the last two months, I mean, someone came in malicious, hacked the heck out of their infrastructure, how safe are we from that sort of...
I would like to tell you that we're very safe, I cannot tell you that. We, we have, this gets back to our infrastructure. We need to improve that. What I have done this past year is hired a company, and I'll tell you about that in some upcoming slides, we have a company that is monitoring our system now, as of this past year, 24 by 7, 365 days a year. They have found a number of things where there were attempts on servers that were not properly tightened down, coming from around the world. No, no damage has been done that we can see, but we have, now we, this, this year we now have some visibility into what that is all about. We have a number of, of course, we do all kinds of protections in terms of, you know, virus-checking software, but we have not been able to keep those up very well. We've been, when I got here, there was no security manager, there was a position, nobody in it. It took me six months to fill that. We had a person for a year, that person left. We are just now filling that position after five-month search. In the meantime, we've had to kind of cobble together and keep watching our patches and make sure the system is protected. It is not, we are, we are very thin.
And in a worst-case scenario, is this the information that we're sending to Burbank to store, or, well, what is the worst, what would be the, a worst case for us in terms of operations and budget?
The worst case would be someone could access one of our servers, bring it down, corrupt it, corrupt our data, a great deal of damage could be done.
Isn't the worst case even worse than that? I read about a city who was hacked and their entire liquid resources, all their money was shipped off to Russia for some reason.
We don't have the money, per se, on the system, the treasurer handles that, it's in a bank, and it's on that system.
Yeah, but they, I mean, with all due respect, can't you, can't a really good hacker also generate money orders, send cash if they really get that far in? Or are we not, are we protected against that sort of...
That, yes, I suppose that is, we don't do work order, I mean, money orders through our system.
Well, I don't mean money orders, but however we transfer money, however the city treasurer...
That's all through the city treasurer, it would be somewhat difficult for them to get to that from our city.
If I can, that, that happened with some Southern California cities.
Yeah, I read about this, more than one city...
Some of the San Diego Valley, it's been about two years ago. And at that time, I asked both IS as well as treasurer, they were using the program that essentially downloaded a program that allowed them to see what was being done on their, on their computers. As a result, they replicated their code numbers and actually made fund transfers of some very large sums of money. At the time, it was noted to me that, that we had systems that would protect from that, I mean, you have your virus protection systems and all that, of which the city clerk is included. Many of these cities didn't have those, and looking at them, following, they were some of the smaller, less sophisticated systems, but yeah, they lost some considerable money.
We are concerned that, we are, I'm very concerned about that, and that's why, you know, we, we need to spend some significant amount of time and effort to improve our security controls, that we have some pretty good ones.
Let me just make, make a note here. Mayor, Mayor Friedman, yes, let me just follow up on that remark as far as your concern with the safety of our internal systems. In my presentation yesterday, I quickly went over the fact that we have a morning routine, and what we do is anticipate our cash needs for the coming week. In that regard, we try to keep our balances in our accounts at a minimal level, so there, and keep that money working, which would mean the money is not in the bank account and not subject to be released. When this scare came up several years, I don't think it was several, one or two years ago, came up, we went to our bank and asked their systems people and their safety people, they came back and advised us that they were aware of the situation, and the system that we use through our bank, Bank of America, is secure against that. So I don't have a concern there. As far as, if you will, replicating wire transfer instructions and rerouting them. So, which is on the Bank of America system.
Right, yeah, I don't remember how the scam was done, but I do remember reading about this one or two years ago.
Right.
And I remember it was, you know, it was, it was not...
It was significant, and scary.
Significant money in, you know, real cities.
Yes, absolutely, and real money.
And real money, right.
So I think we'll, we'll just move on down to some of these. We have our website, we get over 100,000 hits per month in the city's website, that's pretty good. The Help Desk gets about 480 calls a month. We have about 1,000, a little over 1,000 tickets, that is something to be done, coming through there. And we, of those calls that we do get, we get high satisfaction, people do get their problems solved. I think there's a lot more that goes on that is not being ticketed in the city, but that's, that's another issue.
Ed, I'm sorry, explain what you mean by tickets.
Oh, tickets are service requests. That's internal service requests. Let's see. So we went through this already, let's go to the next slide. Here is the applications division now, it's budget. As you, as you see, the total appropriations, we're actually asking for less money than last year. And the M&amp;O is going down, and the rest is, I think, pretty straightforward. The one I might want to mention is that 600, the transfers, shows 575,000 last year and 600,000 this year. That 575,000 last year was a contribution from this fund to the general fund, to help the general fund. The 600,000 this year is to move from the applications division to the infrastructure division, the one I had indicated has, has the need.
Last year's budget, it was not in the application support budget, it was a separate budget item, the 575,000, which was under 604,195. This is 604,175, but last year, the budgeting for this account included what I was referring to earlier, the 1.4 million contractual services, as well as 646,000 in computer software and 220,000 in computer hardware. Are you keeping the same levels of budgeting? Are you budgeting 1.4 million? Let's say if you're budgeting 131,000 less, are you budgeting 1.2 million for contractual services for this account? Because that's what was budgeted last year. And it would probably be under your M&amp;O maintenance enough, it is under your M&amp;O.
Right, M&amp;O has got 1.78, so it's, it's, it's dropping.
Last year was 2.6, so it is dropping.
Yes.
But I'd like to know how much contractual services are you budgeting for?
In terms of what, we're investing in contracts, you're saying?
That's what you have last year is 1.4.
Yeah.
What is it this year?
I have a list here, coming up in another slide, that shows some of what there's, the contracts are. We can, we can look at that.
And computer software in this account, application division, are you decreasing that amount, increasing the amount? It was 646,000, 290 dollars last year, the adopted budget.
Let me pull that up.
Slide 22.
Is it?
Yeah, I think so. That may not be all of it.
On slide 22, we're going to talk to you about who are our...
Why don't we hold on that until, until we get there?
Here are some metrics of the information, infrastructure division. There are about 1,860 PCs and laptops throughout the city, that's almost one for every employee, though not every employee has one, some employees have more than one. Printers, we...
Why would they need more than one?
Well, it sometimes happens that they have different devices. There's also occurs, for example, that there's one device that's a, put in a particular location that is not an employee, for example, in the library, that sort of thing. Printers, we have about 175 multi-use printers, we like multi-use printers, that is a printer that's put in a, a general area that people go to and use, they have to walk to it a little bit, it's, it's sort of our internal biking program for employees, but it also means that you can have one device, it's got high speed, it's got capabilities, it costs a little bit of money, but lots of people get to use it, and it's less work. So we encourage those, we are trying to move away from the single printer per person... So we encourage those, we are trying to move away from the single printer per person, the $125 device that we have to worry about and the labor to put it in, to figure out what's wrong with it and to replace it is more than it's worth. So we're moving away from those. Copiers, there are 55 copiers, they're RICO copiers in the city. This was a program that was put in place by the finance department, we, before I arrived, and we, we've taken that over from them. It's a lease program, it's actually worked very well. Those copiers are very much used by people, they enjoy them, they like them, they're very effective, they are multifunctional, they have faxes in them, they have, some have color, depending on the location. There are also printers, so they, they do all of those functions, and that seems to be a very good way to do that. We're going to be looking at the costs of that lease and what we need to do later on. Servers in the city, there are 252 servers in the city. About 175 of those are actually in our data center, meaning that 75 of them are somewhere else. About 25 of those are in the police building, and the rest are spread throughout the city. And they are sometimes in closets, they're in places that don't have the appropriate environmentals in, in some cases. There's a variety of reasons, they've just been placed in those various locations. We, we would like to see increasingly servers put in places that can properly take care of them.
Ed, has this number gotten smaller over the last couple of years?
Yeah.
I thought at one time it was like 400 servers.
Pasadena had 400 servers, yeah. This is from our, we've, I might say we've done a...
You're confusing us with Pasadena?
No, there was a bit of a competition going on between the two departments once upon a time, comparing their numbers, but the effort was to try and reduce the number of servers. I thought our number was larger, but...
This comes from a, from a actual inventory that we did, and...
This is much smaller than our neighboring communities.
Yeah. We have 231 network devices, those are basically switches and routers and other kinds of devices. Storage area networks, we have five of them. Two of them I described earlier, the great big refrigerator that we have, and that one that we're putting in Burbank, that's two of the five. There's another one that is much, much, much smaller, that's in ISD, and then there's two in the police department, one of which is used for video capture, an attempt at video capture for cars. Land phones, we have 1,890 of those, again, just about as many as people, but there, again, there are phones that are on doors, that are in lots of places that a person isn't particularly there.
Ed, before we leave this, there was an article recently about the city of LA recognizing their magnitude larger, but the amount of money being spent on, for example, 411 information calls, directory assistance calls...
Yes.
For them, it was millions. Can you just touch on that very quickly, how we handle that here?
Yeah, we don't, we don't permit that, it's blocked here, so that people cannot use that. We watch it very, very closely, and that is, of course, a savings, we expect people to simply find out the right numbers and not, not be using those services. There's another thing that we've done this year in particular, is we've tried to unify the, the internal telephone system of the city. It's called a dial plan, and now we have the four, four-digit dialing. So what we've done is, there's actually several PBXs in the city, and then there were a lot of outlining, outlining places. We have used our network, voice-over IP, to have phones in these remote sites operate over the network and operate to the PBXs that we do have, the larger PBXs, saving us from having devices out in those places, and allowing us to go to a dial plan in which you can, in fact, pick up the phone and dial just four digits, and you stay within the city's own network, you never go out to the telephone company, and you can get, call that other department. That wasn't always the case here, it was the case in certain buildings, for certain buildings, but now it's all of the civic center, the fire stations, the library, quite at most of our sites. And that, that's occurred just within this last year, and that's through the efforts of our telephone guys and our network guys that have made that possible.
And that saves us money.
And that saves us money, because we're not going out to the telephone company for Let's see, moving on, this is the infrastructure division's budget. Here you see an increase in the M&amp;O, that is for a series of projects, we have the detail on those, I will bring that out in a coming slide.
If I may ask the same type of questions, you don't have to answer them, address them later. The contractual services for this fund last year was $650,000, construction was 150, and then telephone charges were $696,000. These are the amounts that were budgeted last year.
Yes, and that's 600...
And, and computer hardware was $448,900. The question is, are you budgeting the same amounts this year?
No.
Or where are you, where are you decreasing or increasing?
I can tell you that, for example, in the 696,000, I was going to cover this in another slide, but I'll, I'll cover it right now. The 696,000 in telephone costs...
It's what kind of cost?
The 696,000 last year in telephone costs, we have reduced that to 396,000. We have made a drop of $300,000 in telephone costs. There's a whole story behind that. We, we went to last, in May of last year, I came to the city council, I said, I think we need to get on this CalNet 2 contract, get AT&amp;T service through CalNet 2. We had not had that here in this city. It took me a whole year to get all the data through our folks to put on that contract of what exactly we had and what was going to be here long enough to survive on that contract, given the changes we were going to make. I promised the council in May of last year that there would be $190,000 savings by doing this, without any reduction in services, the same service, in fact, improved service. That amount turns out, well, you'll see it in the upcoming slides, it's more like, over 400,000.
So in, in the actual financials, we should see a reduction in this account of that...
There is a reduction of 300,000.
For this current year?
Yes, and we pass that on through the service charges to the departments.
Thank you.
In that detail.
And contractual services, what are they?
It is contractual service, it's, actually, it was under telephone, telephone.
Telephone.
Yeah.
But contractual services was 650, is, is that being budgeted again this year?
No, what is being budgeted this year is $924,611. That is made up of building wiring project, which we like to do, at $684,611, and $240,000, which we need for that RICO, those copiers. So all of our budgeting is from the ground up. Let's see, in fact, I was going to give you some of that detail, and you just asked about it, so we'll go on to the next slide. Here we have the wireless division and some of its metrics. There are 1,800 radios, again, about as many as there are people, but these are largely used by police, fire. In fact, I can give you that breakdown, police has 631 radios, fire has 475. This does not include Verdugo Communications. GWP has 331, Public Works has 254, and all the rest of the departments have 122. We have wireless data, this is mobile data in the cars, there's about 136 of those, plus data cards, 259 that we have in the city. Data cards are using the carrier, telephone carriers for your data communications. We eventually like to get away from paying for this, we have a plan to do so, but it's there for now. Wireless phones, we have 339 smartphones in the city and 236, well, I guess you'd call them dumb phones. And we have the distribution of those. They are increasingly, just, I believe that mobile phones, smartphones will eventually be the, the device of choice for, for the community to communicate with its city. We're moving in that direction, but right now, what we have, these phones are being used pretty effectively by these departments, police officers carry them, firemen have them, water and power has 100 of them.
How often do we replace them? Do we get a new one every time a new model comes out?
Actually, no. We keep them, right now, our standard is the BlackBerry, we're going to be looking in the early, this summer, at replacement of that BlackBerry.
Don't we receive them for free?
Yes, we do. That's exactly right. The unit itself is, the negotiated contract that we have with T-Mobile is that they give us the device, and if it breaks...
So me giving the device back to you is not saving us anything?
Doesn't save us.
Are you serious?
I'm, I am serious, on that regard.
Sorry, Mr. Nigirian, I didn't want to say anything.
I thought, I thought, I thought I was closing the budget.
Well, there is, that, I'm sorry, that won't...
But there are monthly fees, I guess.
Yes, that, that goes on, we pay the monthly fee, and that's the idea, they, they figure they can make some money on the, on the fee, and if a phone breaks, they give us another one for free, and when we...
What is the monthly fee per each? I want to know how much I'm saving by doing.
About $34.
How much?
$34 a month, usually.
So 12 months, I have saved you $360.
There you go.
Is that reflected in the budget somewhere?
It should be.
I was going to add one more thing, and that is, we've upgraded these phones from time to time, and we've simply taken the old phones and, and sold them for salvage. We get, what, $60 a phone? So we make money on the phones, and we get new ones under this agreement.
That makes me even better, feel even better.
So it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
We, we need to negotiate that for a new, a new set of phones, we want to move to a new platform, and we will be discussing that with the departments. With regard to the rest of this, audio, PA, I have to, I have to, I know you're going to ask, so I will tell you that that includes the one that's in this room, and that we have right now a project to add speakers back there, so that the council can hear the, the person at the podium better. We, we know that, we're going to get that, that done. Vehicle location, this is largely, I think this is in integrated ways, that's it. They, they need that to know where their vehicles are going, and it's a vehicle tracking system, where the vehicle is. And then the Wi-Fi network, this is the smart grid Wi-Fi. It is, there are 255 radios that have already been installed throughout the city, they are functioning, they function for that smart meter. And what they do basically is they pick up the signal from the meter and transmit it back to just 13, one of 13 fiber sites, which are, happen to correspond to the electric substations in the city, and that then is transmitted back to our data center. This is a, it is a Wi-Fi network, but it is a very, very thin Wi-Fi network. It was designed and built only for smart meters, and smart meters have very small data mounts, and they have a lot of robustness in terms of that transmission, they will retransmit until it is successful, as much as 80 days, and therefore, this network just barely covers the city, especially up in the Montrose area, it, it uses its hopping capability, and will not be sufficient for broader uses. It can, however, be upgraded, and we are in discussions right now and some plans for next year to do that for smart grid, which is where the water and power needs to be have, read sensors all over its network. And that will eventually, our hope is, that eventually, we can build this network to the point where it can be used by other departments for things like handheld inspections, work order processes, eventually, we would like to see all of those processes done that way.
Can I ask a question, going back to the wireless phones and picking up on Mr. Nigirian's question from earlier? I'm glad to see that it's 575 out of, you know, a couple thousand employees that we have, so it's not everybody.
Yes.
What is the criteria by which someone gets a cellphone? Clearly, it's not everybody, we're not giving cellphones to all of our employees, and I, assuming it varies by department, but is it up to the department head to decide who in their department gets a cellphone?
It is, it is the department head's decision, yeah.
And I'm assuming that they're pretty restrictive, that they don't just give these phones out to everyone, that it's someone that is in the field a lot, or needs to be reached over weekends and at night, that sort of thing?
That's, that's what it's intended to do, it is at their discretion. The department that has the most is water and power, they have just over 100. They have, what, 450 employees or so, so... That's your question? All right, moving on, we're probably running out of time here. Here is the wireless division.
Excuse me, let me just check, is anybody, Mr. Weaver has to leave, does anybody else have to leave, because we will lose a quorum.
I do too.
At noon?
Yeah, I had budgeted till noon.
Me too.
Okay, since it's noon then, why don't we stop for today, and we'll pick up again on, when is our next budget meeting?
Maybe once we get through this side, is that a better cutting point?
Well, it is noon, so if you have to leave right at noon, can you wait until we finish the slide?
Yeah, I can finish.
All right, we'll finish up this slide, and we'll move on.
Okay. This is the wireless division's closed budget, and as you can see, there is a decrease in the M&amp;O and an increase in the capital. That, that capital has to do with, first of all, about 200,000 in radio replacements for both police and fire, 515,000 for the microwaves for Glendale, microwaves that connect the mountaintops to one another for the radio system, 289,000 for, specifically for St. Augustine out by Shoal Canyon, for the generator and what is called HVAC, the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements. These mountaintops, we have a number of them, we have a, a picture of, of where they all are, they, they occur on Mount Lucans, St. Augustine, Mount Tom, Mount Lee, a number of these sites, and the equipment that's up there needs to have generators, needs to have proper air conditioning for the, that it doesn't get overheated, and we also need to eventually harden these, hardening them, that is having more than one path to them, so that if we lose one connection, one microwave, we don't lose the site. And we've got projects this year moving in that direction, so that's what some of those costs are. This is related to the whole ISIS, I'm sure the city is quite proud of the, of the, its role in ISIS and the seven cities that founded that, now there are 21 agencies that are operating, and the master site for all of that, of course, is right here in Glendale, and is operated by our, our wireless staff. And that concludes that slide, and so...
Again, I want to make the same inquiries, I see that you have a $308,000 decrease in your M&amp;O, but I want to ask the question, just so the question is asked, for contractual services, last year you had $440,000, not you, but the department. The cellphones were $232,000, furniture and equipment are $834,000, and general supplies were $270,000. I'd like to know what is being scheduled, what is being budgeted this year, and how much of these expenditures are being decreased or increased, either way. Thank you.
If you'd like me to answer that now?
No, I think we're pretty much done, but...
If you can answer it quickly, otherwise, we'll be sending all of you an email.
Okay, that's, I don't mind an email.
I know you don't, but we have quite a list of them.
Okay.
Contractual services, it's, this year we're budgeting $463,500, last year it was $440,000. That increased cost was due to Motorola maintenance contract increases, $23,500. What was the other categories?
The cellphones of $232,000.
Cellphones, we are now budgeting $232,77. We added cellphone and data cards.
Well, it's the same amount.
It's the same amount.
What about furniture and equipment, 45150?
Furniture and equipment...
$834,000 last year, the year before, 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars.
Yeah, that's, we're budgeting $395,000.
Okay, so that's where, okay.
Yep.
That's where you're decreasing?
That's right.
And general, general supplies, 270,000, in the prior years, you had $1,000, all of a sudden, for general supplies, you had $270,000 for 2010 and '11, what are you budgeting for this year?
General supplies... 45350, 45.
Steve, do you have it?
Small tools?
Why don't you come up and help?
Oh, general supplies, yes.
How can it go from 1,000 to 270, and then what are you budgeting this year?
Right here. Go ahead.
Adam, Mayor, members of the council, Steve Veronica, wireless administrator. In previous years, we had budgeted all of our general operating expenses in the communications maintenance account. Well, that account has been changed to just data communications, so we can better track the wireless cards versus... the wireless cards versus cellphones and versus wireline phones. So, um, in consultation with finance, they said the more appropriate place for us to budget all of our operating expenses would be in general supplies. That's why that, that number jumped so greatly.
Okay.
And it's jumping a little bit from last year to this year because we have more equipment going out of warranty that we're going to have to spend money to repair.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, with that, we will resume on, um...
Do we have a public call?
Yes, but he, he's spoken already twice today, and from what I understand, the, because it's one meeting, then the requirement is not that he...